Or is it just because there's a lot of people?
All right, it is 6:01 PM on Tuesday, January 8th, and I will call to order a regular meeting of the Red Wing School Board. And we have all of our school board members present. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, law, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Tiff is going to read our mission statement.
The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Okay, next up is our meeting agenda. Does anybody have anything that they want to add or amend on the agenda?
So we're still doing the planning meeting at the very bottom? Or did we, where we were gonna go?
Yes, because that way Frank can leave the meeting. It was more pertinent when he was going to be in person at the meeting, but yes, then he can log off and we'll do that.
I will make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Rowe, second, first, sorry, motion made by Ms. Tiff, second by Ms. Rowe, to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. That carries. All right, next is our Oath of Office. So we have two new board members and a returning board member. And when I had my Oath of Office, it was virtual, so I don't know if we have you stand or, I mean, there's nobody else here.
You've already done the oath.
Well, yes, your official, your official oath.
Oh, wait a second. We're a board, let's be a board.
Well, I don't, do you guys have just?
I don't think you do. You wanna say it together? I will let you get.
Sure.
Do you need the white?
All right, so our newly elected board members, we have Teresa Bjornstad, Jim Bryant, and Rachel Marshall Schoenfelder. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the Oath of Office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a Director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. All right, and then. Furthermore, we must strive together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Please publicly affirm your commitment by repeating the Oath of Office after me. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
Of Independent School District Number 256.
Of Independent School District Number 256.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Yay!
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want us to stay together?
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
How are you?
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations, congratulations. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I get a photo of the screen?
Well, I wrote "credit" something to school.
Sure, good. I never have all this there, honey, because I was in my basement.
Were you sworn in during COVID?
Yes.
Oh, geez.
I was in my basement. This is much, it's much nicer to meet here.
Yes.
Okay, so, thanks for letting me see your.
Not a word.
All right, next is our election of officers. So the first up is Board Chair. And then that new, whoever the Board Chair is, will take over the rest of this. So I am looking for nominations for Board Chair.
Ms. Tiff, here to you. I nominate Hannah Ostendorf to continue as Board Chair.
Other nominations?
Ms. Rowe? I will nominate Jim Bryant as Chair. That was my nomination.
Okay. All right, so are there any other nominations? Okay, any other nominations? That was three times. And then we need a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Okay. Second, okay. So motion to close nominations by Ms. Rowe, second by Ms. Buck. So we're just voting for that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. So that carries, seven zero, so nominations are closed. So we will do. I think we do vote for both at the same time, right? Is that how it works?
I think we do. We did it last year was named one and then yay or nay.
Okay.
And then the second one, yay or nay, no matter what.
Okay, so we will start with Mr. Bryant. So all those in favor of Mr. Bryant serving as our Board Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Nay. Okay, so that carries. Congratulations, you are our Board Chair, four to three.
Thank you very much for the honor to be your Chair. Thank Chair Ostendorf for her last year of being Chair to our school board. Forward to serving the school board here. We've got our new members on board, our current members on board. And open this board as we work together to get this district in the best shape we can based upon, we just passed a referendum. We're in the process of looking at a possible new superintendent. We have a nice interim right now. And we have a community that is supportive of the school that we have here. So I will make mistakes. We won't always agree, everybody in the room, but as a board, let's keep in mind what we're working, how we work together and how we do things. So we go forward, and I'm open to everything, and I intend to reach out to you in the next week or so, we'll get to committees down the road, but that's part of the responsibility. But whatever committees are there, committees you enjoy doing and want to do, and we'll come back to the next meeting and so forth. So with that, again, we'll move on since we want to get out of here. We've got to entertain a motion for Vice Chair. Does anybody here want to be Vice Chair? Ms. Tiff?
I will nominate Hannah Ostendorf for Vice Chair.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Director Schoenfelder?
Director?
Director, that's what you, if you look on the website, that's what they're called.
Nice.
We'll talk about that, what we like. Ms.?
I'd like to nominate Pam Rowe for Vice Chair.
Pam Rowe? Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations for Vice Chair.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. So we'll start with, the first one nominated was Hannah Ostendorf, Vice Chair. All in favor of Hannah, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, I believe that was three to four. Okay, let's do, then we'll just affirm it. All in favor of Pam Rowe as Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four to three. Okay, congratulations.
Jim and I have worked well together as.
Yeah.
Differing.
Positions.
Yes, thank you. So I'm looking forward to working with Jim again, and this time he can have all the work, and I'll just be there to back him up.
A good leader is a good delegator.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for position of Clerk. Are there any nominations for position of Clerk?
I'll nominate Jennifer Tiff.
Jennifer Tiff, is there any other? Ms. Schoenfelder, the Director, are you still in the queue?
No.
Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Clerk, clerk, I'm ahead of myself, clerk. Any other nominations for clerk? Any other nominations for clerk? I will entertain a motion to close nominations and appoint Director Tiff as Clerk of the Red Wing School Board. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now I'll go back to Treasurer, which I quickly jumped to before we got to Clerk position. Are there any nominations for position of Treasurer? Yes.
I'll nominate Ms. Schoenfelder.
Rachel Marshall Schoenfelder as Treasurer. Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Is there any other nominations for Treasurer? One more time, final, final. Any other nominations for Treasurer? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to cast unanimous ballot for Rachel Marshall Schoenfelder as Treasurer of the Red Wing School Board, School District 256.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna go on to the rest of the meeting. We'll wrap it up. I know we all want to get out of here. And because of the weather, and we appreciate Clark and Craig's time for joining us this evening. Educational plan is something we go by and guide by in front of us. It's in our packet every week. Please familiarize with yourself if you have been a while. And I'll come up with a list, if you don't mind, as to who reads the mission statement, so everybody has an equal opportunity to say, to get on there and be expressive. So I think that's great, we can do that. Recognitions and upcoming events. Anybody have anything? Yes. Director, what do you want? Let's back up here. What do you want me called, Ms. or Director?
Ms. Miss the sign.
What is it, Ms.? Okay, I'm totally fine with that. I just, because even on the website, you see it, Director. Ms. Schoenfelder?
Well, I just wanted to recognize Pam Rowe, because going to the leadership conference, she's listed in the MSBA honor roll for the Director's Award, which means she's a member who is the only member from Red Wing in the past four years that has done 100 or more points of attendance at training.
So that's pretty commendable.
That takes a lot of work, and you've obviously done a lot of education and training, and so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public recognition or upcoming events?
The Codamara Project, the community engagement sessions, the. The community dinner is gonna start on Saturday evening from 5:30 to 7:30 at Treasure Island at, I think it's called the Deck is the room. That's gonna be, so it's just gonna be a light meal with conversations with Thrive Unlimited, the muralist and the group that is leading this. And then Sunday, they're gonna, we're gonna have a family fun-oriented winter carnival style with ice fishing, hike and harvest, storytelling at the teepee, in teepees at the Bark Lodge with traditional teas and fish to be sampled. And then finishing it up on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day at the Clay and Creative Center. We're gonna, Christy Childs, Kara Woodward, and Sienna Wilgrouns are gonna be showing how to make medicinal naturescapes of the things that we're gonna be harvesting on the hike and harvest during the winter carnival. So, and then highlight and celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday and kinda, just kinda start the new year of setting up environments for people to, what did Obama call it on the radio? Experimental, experimental ed, because we're so used to saying Indian ed on our side, so now we put like hands-on learning and things like that as experimental ed. So a real experimental ed experience at the winter carnival. So be sure to stop by and check out all three if you can, but if not, at least one.
So this is on the 14th, 15th, and 16th?
And 16th. There's gonna be something fun to do.
Yep, okay.
On those three days.
You mentioned before the meeting there was gonna be some type of, some sent each board member to?
Oh, well, yeah, they're gonna do, Kim is working on personal invites to board members, all tribal council members and city council members and mayor, so. So just, I know she was looking to get your two new emails, so I directed her to Lisa to get that. So keep an eye out on your emails for that invite, so.
Okay, you have anything else that just went to break? So not a lot else going on there. All right, we'll go on to a public comment. Did you receive any, any emails? Ms. Norton, did you receive any emails or phone calls?
I did not, sir.
Okay, we will bypass that. Then we'll go on to school board reports. Anybody have any school board reports since our last meeting on December 19th? I remember right?
Nothing for negotiations.
Anybody else? I'd calendar committee, and then we come to our next meeting, so. So then we have administrative reports. Ms. Norton?
Okay, thank you. I have a few items. The first one was over the holidays that our kids did an outstanding job of connecting the schools to the community. And I've listed those in the, in the report there. I'll just read them so that the rest of the community can hear. The Twin Bluff students raised a total of $2,618 in their December coin drive for the Red Wing food shelf. And the fifth graders were the grand prize winners of a movie during that time period. They themselves raised $1,410 of that $2,600. So congratulations to all of Twin Bluff students, and specifically our fifth grade for the outstanding job they did for our food shelf, our local food shelf. Burnside students and staff as well, they did a collection, and they collected nearly 1,400 items, not dollars, but items. And that, those items weighed 1,033 pounds to restock the area food shelf. So donations of money came from Twin Bluff, and donations of actual product of food to restock those shelves came from Burnside. The last of the fundraisers that happened came from Sunnyside, our Sunnyside students. Our kindergarten class coin drive collected $591, and that went to the Red Wing High School food shelf. More a lot directed into our school directly. And the first grade, that was our kindergartners, our first grade class did a coin drive, and they collected $1,039 as first graders, which is outstanding. It's just coins. So there's bringing it in, giving, all of the schools themselves basically just said, we need to give back to our community, so a large thank you to our staff for organizing that, and our students, our particular students, and I know the families that are out there as well, moms and dads that are out there supporting their kids. And that connection to basically not thinking of themselves, but thinking of others during that needed, during that time period. So congratulations to all of them. Fourth item that I have this evening is I'm bringing to the board a 2024 music student travel program. This is not for another, basically another year out. It's in your packet, and it is a band choir trip to Italy. And Scott Perro and John Bina are actually online. Scott and John, if you want to unmute if they had any, any questions. Will happen then is during spring break of 2024. They will travel over to Italy. The agenda for that, the preliminary agenda basically is within your packet for the board to be able to see that. Has to come to the board. Anytime there's an overnight stay, it comes to the board. So that's what I'm doing this evening, basically. Right now is an initial update. If you wanted to be able to go ahead and improve that. If you had any questions for Scott or John about the trip, having read through that, they're available to you right now. Jennifer, go ahead.
Thank you both for being here. I was just wondering about fundraising or additional help for families who want to go but can't afford this trip.
John or Scott, welcome.
John, you want to take that one?
Yes. Thanks for having, giving us the opportunity to be with you this evening. I'm sorry Mother Nature hasn't cooperated with us. I think Scott and I's position is that if the board views this proposal favorably, that we will start immediately making connections to provide opportunities for students to raise funds. In addition, we are going to explore foundations, charitable organizations, fraternal organizations in town to recruit and see what might be possible to bring the cost of the, of this opportunity down for students who might struggle to cover the expense here.
Great, thank you.
Any?
Anyone have any other questions from the board standpoint? Jennifer, you had another one?
I don't have another question, but I would make a motion to approve the band and choir trip for spring of 2024.
Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I would second that.
Motion is a second. Any other discussion? Will you keep us informed, please, on the fundraising? If there's fundraising requests out there, so we can share them with people that are interested in, in helping with those going on the trip.
Absolutely. I think Scott and I view this as a community collaboration. You are all part of that too. So as we go forward, I think you can probably expect to see us maybe back in front of you later this spring, either in person or in, in writing through Superintendent Norton.
Very good. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
It's gonna be a great opportunity for our kids, so we appreciate your support.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Anything else? Ms. Norton, anything else?
No, that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, then we went on to the consent agenda. And we started with consent agenda, minutes, claims, accounts, and determination. Is there anybody who wished to pull anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then we're on the donations and grants. We have a number of them this evening. Do you want to take it, Ms. Norton, this time? Or do you want me to do it?
I don't have that sitting in front of me, I apologize.
Oh, we received donations and, and from various people in the community in different areas for wonderful things for our school. Knottledorff Enterprises for the Sunnyside kindergarten students, 172 copies of the book Construction People, City of Red Wing incubator, $600, used in the Science Department of Red Wing High School, Andy's LLC for robotics for 200. My wife and I for the Angel Fund for $100. Haley for Senate campaign, $1,000 for Red Wing High School robotics, and Securian Financial Group for 250 for second grade matching donation. So hearing that, is there a motion to adapt the resolution?
I want to accept the, to make a resolution, accepting the donations and grants, and thank you to everyone.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Start with Ms. Bjornstad?
Aye.
Ms. Schoenfelder?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Ms. Rowe?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much for all the wonderful donations. All right, parking lot proposal for Cobble or Mr. Johnson and Mr. Gaylor? Are you online? Or just on?
Most of them are. We're both here, and we're both, I'm gonna put it on the screen here. Hey, first off, welcome to our new board members, Teresa and Rachel. Welcome to our team. Glad to have you onboard. The first, the first piece we're doing here tonight, Alan and I have been working on the parking lot replacement at Cobble Family Center. We did receive bids on December 27th. We did five, five of the bids, we did get everywhere from 93 up to 137, I see. Our budget was $85,000. As most of you know, we also work with the HRA, with the Women's Shelter right next to Cobble Family Center. They're putting in $25,000 towards this project as well. So when you add in our engineering fees of 12,4, we're just a little under 4,000 under budget, so we're right where we should be. So we're recommending that Aslexon's, the Red Wing contractor, be awarded the bid to replace the parking lot at the Cobble Family Center. And this is with Long Term Facility Maintenance Fund, LTFM funds that were approved earlier in the, or later, you know, this year, last year, I guess they were approved, so. So are there any questions for Alan and I on the parking lot part?
Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. I love that we would be going with a Red Wing area contractor, but since there's such a big gap between their quote and the others, I was just wondering if you could talk about that, if there's a reason for that, just because it's such a big.
That's a good question. Chuck, talk about that, Kevin, or you want to? You certainly can, go ahead, Alan. So some of the contractors, the other four contractors.
So some of the contractors, the other four contractors that bid on it were using subcontractors. So I'm pretty sure that it was Ask, Ask, Aslicksens, that is, they're gonna do their own.
Asphalt.
Asphalt. So that's why we're thinking that it was lower.
Right, because they don't have to sub anything out, they have the equipment and do it all themselves.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise we'll entertain a motion to, recommendations to move to accept the bid from Aslicksens.
Move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? You do like the idea that it's somebody locally that's bidding and gonna do the work, which I guess is gonna be in summer of, this summer of 2023?
Correct.
Is that? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna stand from voting just since my husband's company was one of the bidders.
Okay.
That's, that's better, we say, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention?
Yes.
We have six, oh, and one, with one exception. Thank you very much. Cobble.
The next, sorry, Jim.
Go ahead.
The next one is the Cobble roof that will be replaced this coming summer. This one here, we had bids again that ranged from 439 to 673. We checked on a couple high ones and basically they had more work than they could do, so they put in a bid that they really weren't interested in it, obviously, so. Our budget was 468, 168,000. This leaves a contingency of 29,000, which is pretty much right where we would like to be. We don't expect any overruns, but with the roof, you just never know, there could be wet insulation or anything under it that was missed, so. Again, this is LTFM funding covering the, this project as well, so. So any questions on the roof for a call?
I'll just add before we do, I'll do a motion first. I'd like to rally, get a motion on the table and then we'll have discussion. Is there a motion to accept the bid from Jackson Associates for the Cobble Roof Project?
Some vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? For someone who grew up as a young boy on a flat roof in a house, you have to maintain them, you have to take care of them, because eventually they leak. And nothing worse is when mom's cooking at the stove and the water's running down the stove. So you have to take care of, we're stewards of the school district and part of our responsibility is the buildings, along with many other things, to make sure that they are in good shape during the time here and in the future, so.
I would just, I would just like to share real quick that there's gonna be a lot of activity down there this summer and shared with the board that we worked with Larson Engineering, with the two contractors, to make sure that this goes over as smoothly as possible, so that things are happening in.
The right order.
The right order with each other. So I know it's a lot of undertaking, but we did take that under consideration too when we talked to each contractors bidding, you know.
See, Teresa has a question.
Well, I just wanted to say too, I think that deferred maintenance causes greater expenses later. And so I think it's really important when buildings and ground says, we need to take care of this, that we take care of it. So, because it's more cost effective to do it now than to wait.
Thank you, Teresa. Yes, it could cause a lot of problems at leaks.
All right. Hearing nothing else? Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we're on to.
Thank you, everyone.
Meeting schedule. Right now you have in front of you, you have, we're meeting first and third Mondays of each month, except for the month of July. And unless a month, the first and third Monday in the month that we're supposed to meet is a holiday, then we meet on the Tuesday to follow. Right now, we currently have it where we meet, do a workshop at 5:00 PM with our school board, starting at 6:00. Doesn't mean we can't change that. So that's why we're having a discussion. If we want, we cannot start the school board meeting prior to the time that we set, unless we call a special meeting, emergency meeting. So if we say we leave it the same as it is this year, we get done the workshop at 5:45, we can't start the school board meeting till 6:00. Get done at 6:15, we can start it then, because it's after the time that we started. So what is the board's thoughts on going forward with the workshop and school board meeting?
Well, just for some historical perspective, we used to have three or four different committees that would meet separately, and we decided to forego those committees and just do one workshop before every school board meeting, so that we didn't have to keep going to all these committee meetings. And in my opinion, it's worked fairly well. It helps to shorten up our school board meetings, even though it doesn't feel like it a lot of the time. We've had a lot on our agenda and on our plates, but I think it's worked really well. It's, it's cut down on some of our meeting responsibilities, which I think has been very helpful.
Well, I really like that, especially the legislative policy. Do you remember you and I first joined? And it's just nice that all board members, especially the finances and legislative, it's nice that all board members get to hear instead of always having to report back. So that's why I like doing that in workshops as well.
The other thing that we did, moved it to that was staff was getting besieged with committee meetings and then going to the school board meeting and reporting, same thing, like Ms. Buck just said, she was right on spot on with that about having to go back to the meeting and saying the same thing again. So the only thing we haven't really done much is personnel. That's the only thing I've caught during the last year or so. So we have to, we'll stay on top of that to see if there's some need as we go forward on top of that, so. So, does the wish is to stay the same or modify it, change? Do you all want to meet more?
I think it's good.
Yeah. I do like your idea, Jim Noah, of, I think some personnel issues have gotten lost. And a lot of, when we've had some, like the MOU used to come to the personnel committee and then that would be recommended to the larger group, so they would have gone through and vetted all of that prior, and we just had that MOU the last board meeting, and I feel like we didn't, we weren't really prepared for that. So I do think that we need to think a little bit about maybe table the personnel portion of this, to see if there's a, you know, maybe we can think about an alternative option for personnel. I don't want to add another committee meeting to our already tight agendas, but I do feel like maybe we need to make a list of what Personnel Committee used to do, and maybe we need to just be more cognizant of adding that onto our workshop agendas. But you're right, it is getting lost.
So.
Craig?
Ms. Bjornstedt, go ahead.
Sorry. Is there something that, I mean, how does this work or what is appropriate for us as a board to put, like, could it be in a workshop or what? Because we don't want to violate data privacy either, so.
No, it would be appropriate to be able to bring that forward, certainly. That, in this particular case, it's, it's about the position, not about the people. They weren't in that, that, that portion wasn't brought forward. If it was something that was brought forward and it was about a personnel, then you're correct, Director, then it would be something that we would need to do in a closed session if it was something that investigative, or if it was something that we were doing directly connected to a personnel issue. I think what the Chair and the Vice Chair are talking about more along the lines of is personnel as far as funds, additional pay, those kinds of things, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we used to talk in personnel about like targeted class sizes and those numbers, the ratios of teacher to student. New positions, organizational charts, those kind of things. Some of that we have chatted about in a larger workshop group, but like the MOU or if there's, if there was a contract that somebody was disputing, those contract disputes would come through the Personnel Committee and then, yeah, you wouldn't want to do that in a large group format. So we just need a better system to get all on the same page personnel wise.
I think when we, I might be wrong, but I think when we went to the workshop model, we had talked about if there were like contract issues, that that would go to, like the negotiations team would do that part. And so I don't know if they're just, well, I mean, the MOU shows that there was at least one instance where there was a, you know, a discrepancy or somebody wanted something changed that was in the contract. But otherwise, I don't know if those issues just haven't existed or if they haven't come to us, you know?
Okay. Well, yeah, we, I think we heard it all clear, we'll keep it up. Go ahead.
Mr. Norton wanted to say.
Oh, Mr. Norton?
Just along the lines of Chair, that it's, it's good timing, because Jackie and I will be looking at personnel, we'll be looking at the numbers, student numbers for next year. So it's, it's good timing to bring that in, because as we talk about personnel, we'll have an idea of what Personnel Matters might be coming forward for the next year. So it's, it's great timing.
And for the two new board members, there's an agenda committee that meets with the Superintendent, the Vice Chair and Chair meet, and they go over agenda items for the next school board meeting prior to that Wednesday that is posted, so. If there's something that anybody wishes to ask about, bring them up to Vice Chair, myself, and then Mr. Norton, and we will discuss some of that. Anything to be added at any time at a meeting on an agenda item? So it's not that we don't, we just like to have a heads up, that way they can study it, look at it, and get the information to answer any questions that they may ask about, so.
It's a better transparency for the community if they know this is going, if they can look it up, see it's on the agenda. So it's better to get it added ahead of, as opposed to at a meeting, unless it's an emergency or something, right?
Yes, and sometimes the thing, in any of our cases, we'll, we'll say, like, they add this, and actually it's more of a question that can be answered without going to a full board meeting.
Right.
So that's how your board, well, the Superintendent, oh, I have, I'll try to do that, so. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the school board meeting scheduled for 2023 as presented.
Second.
There's a second, motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, just remember that July 17th is our only board meeting that month. Please note that. And our next, we have next, two of the next three are on a Tuesday, so you know. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. We're gonna move on to depositories, business items. Ms. Paradise, are you on, online?
I am online. Good evening, board members. This is just a formality annual approval for the next few agenda items. There have been no changes from the prior year. Well, I move to name the following as depositories for school district funds for transactions and investment purposes for the 2023 year. First Farmers and Merchants of Red Wing, Associated Bank PMA Securities, Wells Fargo Bank Minneapolis, US Bank in Minneapolis, and the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions?
Ms. Ryan, I just got a message from Lisa that she wants you to say who made the motion and who seconded it, so she can have that.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Motion was by Ms. Rowe, second by Ms. Ossendorf on the depository. And I can go back to the, after this one, I'll go back and cover a couple others, Lisa, if you need to.
That's okay, I have it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, legal counsel.
All right, again, this is an annual designation and there have been no changes from last
I do have a question. Have I also had a question before? I'll ask mine last. I'd like to open it up for bids to, because I'll just say, for instance, MSBA uses a different law firm than us, and we've never changed law firms since I've been here. I think we should open it up for bids, bring it to the next meeting. So I won't vote for this tonight if this is the motion that's being made.
Did we open it up for bids last year?
We did, and we never got the bids, other than saying they were the same. Somebody said they were the same.
Sorry for interrupting.
It's all.
It was, I think it was two years ago we opened it up for bids, and they were all very similarly priced. If we do go out to bid, it will probably not be the next board meeting, but probably a board meeting in February to give us time to receive bids.
I'm fine with that. So, except for the board, we should, go ahead, Ms. Ossendorf.
Do we, Ms. Paradise, do we need to assign these in the meantime? Or if we don't vote on it tonight, is it fine for us to just leave? If, if we don't vote on it tonight, will it just stay as is until we have those new bids in? Or do we need to temporarily vote on it and then revise the, the new one, with a new bid? You know?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Ms. Paradise?
What are the advantages and disadvantages of changing who we're working with right now? Why would we, why do we want to switch? Are we unhappy with who we have?
I don't know if I'm totally unhappy, I'm not thrilled with what was, came from a report we got from an investigator there that was named by them. So I'm willing to look at to see if.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to why.
They offer us the same type of legal representation. And these, there's another firm out there that, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not advocating for any particular firm, because there's a number of them out there. So I'm just saying, some, MSBA uses a different, not that we have to do everything under the A's, but that should tell us something, too. And I think, I can answer that. We will continue to do business with somebody until we change business with them. So we should be covered under what you said, until we elect to go in a different direction, other than we have to legally affirm it at each board, at the organization.
Was that investigator from our law firm or they were recommended by that law?
They were recommended by them.
Okay, so at some time, I mean, regardless of who we go with or what transpires, we should probably give that feedback to them about the investigation, so that, you know, so they know not to, so that they can be a little bit choosier about who they would recommend for investigations. How's that?
Yeah, I understand, and I did.
Okay, oh, thank you.
So I'll make, entertain a motion to table it or entertain a motion to go forward, whatever the board wishes to do. I just wanted you to hear my decision.
I think one of the advantages is they have a long history with Red Wing schools and they've got a lot of knowledge of the different concerns or issues that we've had to work through that required legal interpretation. And when I was Chair several years ago, I contacted them quite frequently and they're very good at keeping track of all of our phone calls and, you know, they can look back at any point and say, I talked to you at 2:30 and this is what we've discussed. And they keep a running tally of all the, all the conversations that they've had, so they, and it's the same lawyer. So that would be one advantage of keeping them, is, is that history, but sometimes that can also be the downfall, right? Sometimes it's okay to have fresh set of eyes and perspective, too, so. I'm just curious. No, it's a great question.
Good question.
Can I second that?
No, you can make it.
Motion to entertain, oh, to table this one. Motion to table this.
Selection of our legal advisor to upcoming meeting.
Yeah, selection to the legal counsel to the upcoming meeting, right?
Good enough for me.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second. And there's no discussion on table motion? So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I have a question.
Go right ahead, Ms. Perdis.
Sorry, can't help myself. Is it both law firms?
Just Kennedy and Jeff Graven.
Okay, because we do have a second one listed here for matters affiliated for civil rights.
Is that a motion?
All right, I move that we accept, oh, Mira Lear Wagner and Cole as the legal advisors that serve for matters affiliated with the Office of Civil Rights.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
To be correctamundo, we probably should talk about the I vote to authorize a superintendent, business manager, and the board chair to initiate contact with that legal advisor. Right, because we need to designate who can talk to that person. Well, and Kennedy and Graven until we change it, so. Right.
Yeah, I think Mr. Norton can contact both, all of them of that. Am I correct, Mr. Norton?
I can.
Do you want to keep those three on there? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We just didn't discuss that or talk about that second piece of the motion.
Right.
So I thought it first. Or is it another motion?
It's another motion.
It's another motion. So is that a motion, Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Electronic fund transfers.
All right, good evening. Good evening again. This is the annual motion to authorize myself and Mr. Norton to make fund transfers and to converse with our bank.
I move to authorize Jackie Perdis, our business manager, and Frank Norton, our interim superintendent, to initiate electronic fund transfers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Corporate card, credit card holders.
All right, attached is a list of your corporate credit card holders for the school district. You can see the positions and the limits there. I believe it was a year ago we decided to approve positions instead of names so that if there is turnover in the position, we did not have to reauthorize it. Any questions?
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the list of credit card holders as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? I just find it a little bit unusual that the superintendent only has a $5,000 credit and many others have it more involved, help him or hurt. So we can, we can adjust that down the road if needed. So person that's in charge of the organization doesn't get the lowest, but pretty close.
It might be about who's paying the bills.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We got financial advisor.
All right, this is our annual designation to designate Baker Tilly as our financial advisor should we have the need to sell any debt throughout this school year. They also provide our compliance documents to the Securities Exchange Commission.
And I'll say they do a nice job.
I move to designate Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors as the primary financial advisor for the school district.
Second.
Motion is a second on the floor. Any other, any discussion? Here are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Committee and lay is on assignments. I stated that a little earlier. So start thinking, there's some, take this list with you here, look at it. If something that interests you, and if I have four or five involved and want to be on one committee, you're not going to do that, so just so you know. But we'll do our best to give what we can. So I'll try to get that put together for our next meeting. She C E D was one that came to mind. When do they meet, Mr. Norton? Does anybody do know?
Thursdays.
Which day?
Thursday, Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday, so we're okay?
For Fourth Thursday, sorry.
So there's no meeting because of the holidays and it moved on to the beginning of January. Did they, does anybody know? Mr. Norton?
Jackie?
Thank you, Ms. Perdis. Okay. Official newspaper, I got a call from someone stated that the county board just approved the official newspaper for Goodview County, and the Republican Eagle underbid everybody at a very low rate because you have Smerota, you have, I think, the Kenyan Leader, Lake City Graphic. Red, huh? Opposed, but Republican Eagle underbid them. I would ask that the bulk part of the motion be, if we decide to go with them, that they honor the price that they gave to Goodview County.
Do you know if it's different than what they put in their letter to us?
Did, I don't, do we have it here?
It was in the packet. That one's printed out.
Her line, so we can, yeah, we can ask them to honor that too. So I don't think it's wrong for us to do that. So honor it or if it's, we can just put that in the hands of Mr. Norton and Ann Robertson, since Ann used to work there, so. Their rate, their rate was very attractive.
This says $2 a line.
$2 a line, yeah, I don't, I heard something else.
That they were doing for the county?
Yeah. I only got a phone call on, so I'm not going to verify. So let's, let's approve it, Republican Eagle, and ask them to honor. Or if this one's less, or that one's less than. It's a hard ask, as you said.
So are you again for a motion?
Yes, I am.
I move to designate the Republican Eagle as the official newspaper of the Red Wing School District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll ride along here. Second reading of policies, 534 school meals and 535 service animals in schools. So this is the second reading of those two policies. Mr. Norton, do you have anything?
No, the board had asked on the second one, the 535 service animals in schools, if I can draw your attention back to the last meeting, why they purposefully left out comfort dogs or therapy dogs out of that. And that was intentional basically by MSBA. That was, we researched that and found out that they actually intentionally left that out. They wanted to concentrate on service dogs. There are others out there in looking at other districts that have policies on the use of therapy dogs within the buildings. MSBA doesn't have their own, so we could look at something down the lines, but that is not attached, therapy dogs or comfort dogs are not attached to this particular policy. So we wouldn't be looking at or discussing that at this particular time with these two motions, with the second readings.
Second reading, Ms. Schulenbauer?
I just, I was curious, when you go through to page five of six, number 10 or X.
Which policy?
The service animal policy.
Page five?
It's page 80. It says page five of six, the very last X or number 10. So I had a little bit concerned reading through that because that essentially makes a therapy animal, from how I interpreted it, if a child qualifies for an IEP or a 504, that it almost sounds like it negates the wording previously about allowing a therapy animal.
This, this particular policy director is, is towards service animals, not towards therapy animals or comfort dogs. So they're just, they're delineating basically between, and this particular one, someone who, if you go back up to the second paragraph on the top, I think it's number two up on the top, talks about service animals not being therapy dogs, not being comfort dogs.
Right, and I read that. I was just concerned because this just indicates essentially if a student has an IEP or a 504, it could be appropriate to determine if an animal is necessary. So that's very different.
I think they're saying it depends on what's written on the IEP or the 504, whether it would be allowed, so that would be referred to. So just because they have an IEP or a 504 wouldn't mean that it would be. But it just says right here, non-service animals. It just says it right there.
Right.
It contradicts its own.
Right.
Welcome to policy.
Well, and I will say that those are the requests, like I get professionally in clinic, are kids who qualify for like a mental health diagnosis and have an IEP, they want a therapy pet as part of that treatment. So I am concerned that this negates what was said about not allowing a therapy pet. Does that make sense?
From my understanding, the difference between them being called service and non is the service dog gets the actual training.
Right, correct.
And the therapy does not. And so that's for where the bites and things. And also another thing is, is I think I was in a health committee meeting when this came up, and all these questions were answered. Also allergies to pets are pretty high, and so they wanted, you know, to also consider that factor for letting animals that aren't professionally trained coming. And then you have a lot of animals inside the buildings, and then the air quality and the students with allergies and stuff, so.
Well, like Ms. Buck says, it says right at the top, non-service animals.
Yeah.
Right, so. I'm not sure that there's a contradiction there, excuse me. So a service animal performs a task. It opens a door, it collects, that's the service animal's job. It guides someone who cannot see. Its job is to do that. So if a student with a 504 or an IEP needed something within the class to be able to perform, to be able to work within that environment, that's not a service animal because it, the service animal, unless the service animal was performing a task for that student with the IEP. So in this particular case, we have therapy dogs within the buildings, a service, not, there's non-service animals. So if a student with a 504 or an IEP wanted services through a therapy dog, for example, they could go through their IEP and say, I would like to connect my IEP to a therapy dog or to a comfort dog, and they could go through the IEP to do that. The IEP ADA, basically, the service animals is already a portion of that, of that person's IEP. That's a portion of their right to be able to be in the building. So I'm not sure that there's a contradiction in here. The service animal performs a task. This would be a service basically through the IEP that the student receive, would receive, similar to OT or something like that, if they needed that service. They could add that on through the 504 or through an IEP.
So then I think that really underscores the incredible importance of having a policy for therapy dogs. Because if you're allowing a therapy dog into the building, and God forbid it bites somebody, who is going to be liable and responsible for that?
There's, right, so we have procedures in place, and there's a policy that we can adapt. The procedures are in place. Anybody that brings a therapy dog in, brings it through the district office, through me. And the parameters are that they have to have, similar to what Director Buck was talking about, they have to have gone through actual the training. So a service dog, as well as therapy dogs, also have training that they go through. And there's a service, it's not a comfort dog, but it's the therapy dogs we have in place basically. And then they have their own insurance. So yes, we could bring that forward as far as therapy, but that's not what we're talking about in this particular policy.
Yes.
So what you have, how you have it written though, like what you just described made, I'm sorry, no. Made me think, like how you phrased it there was that, like, we would have a therapy pet at the school and somebody, a student with an IEP could maybe decide to utilize that therapy pet. But the way it's written here is a student seeks to bring an animal onto school property. So I read this as, like, that's not a, you know, something the school has here. It's something that a student is bringing with. So it is confusing to me.
I was just giving you an example of what already exists and then what someone might request. Those are two different things. What already exists is that there's already therapy dogs that are within, that we're utilizing and have been for some time within the school system. And the procedures were in place as to what they needed. And we have that documentation on file for each of those animals that are within the building. They, they do special education students, non-special education students, intervention, basically. Students might go down for title services, for example, which isn't a special education program, but they might just read, you know, to the dog as a portion of that that's happening inside there. With this particular one that they're saying in here, is if they want to bring in their own, then they could go through their, their IEP or their 504 to bring one in. I was differentiating between a service animal, therapy dogs that we already have, and then this IEP, section 10 of this, if they want to bring in their own, they could go through the IEP to do that.
Ms. Beonson?
So this clause about the kids with IEPs, I think that's, in order for a student to be able to bring in their own dog or their own therapy animal, their issues have to be significant enough that they need a 504 or an IEP. And then through that process, so it can't just be, I have issues where at home I have my therapy dog, and now I want to just bring it to school. You have to have issues that are significant enough that you need accommodations to get through the school day and then through that process.
Well, it does say that, yeah, it does say that the team, it would be referred to the IEP team or the 504 team, and they would determine if that's something.
That's necessary.
Added. But I would suggest that if the IEP or the 504 team think that a student needs a therapy dog to get through the school day, that then they go, then they have to follow that other procedure that you have in place for therapy dogs. And if that doesn't muster, like everybody's pet is not a registered therapy dog. And you, you know, like you had talked about, Mr. Norton, therapy dogs, they don't go through specific training. They go through a certification process where another person looks at that dog. I'm doing it with my dog currently right now. And they're observed making visits, but they're not specifically trained to do any sort of job whatsoever. They have to be calm and gentle, four paws on the floor, depending on your certification level, company, no licking. We don't want to give any treats. I really do believe that we should work on a policy that lays out exactly what our dogs in our buildings can and cannot do. I would always recommend no student feeds or gives treats to any dog because inadvertent scratch on your hand, and yes, I know that they carry their own insurance, but only up to a certain point, and they're still on our property. So anyway, I think we've, we've kind of, it makes me a little bit nervous. I, this clause 10 too, thank you for pointing that out, because it does say if a student with a 504 seeks to bring an animal onto school property that is not a service animal, then that request will be referred to the student's IEP team. And the student's IEP team or 504. And the student's IEP team or 504 team, they're not animal experts.
That's true. So there's another consideration.
I've trained two dogs.
You've seen two dogs?
No, I've trained two dogs myself, but even mine can't get, my two dogs couldn't get the certification. Because it wasn't, I did it through Dakota language. And so I need, when I'm out in the woods, I need my, if I have issues with my kidneys, I need my dogs to go get help. So that's how I train or protect me out in the woods. So that, I had a wild animal, okay? When it sees a dog, when it sees a wild animal, what's it gonna do if it's off, you know?
Yeah, right.
Chase it. So that's why I had to train these dogs with language in order to get them, because I could see one of my dogs just jumping right off the side of the hill after an animal. And that was my fear. So the level of training that needs to come through, if everybody else has had to follow these within businesses and schools and, you know, government entities, I just don't think that if it's severe enough, then you should get a sort of a therapy, or not therapy, a service dog then. And then it's all, everything's, you've covered, you've crossed your Ts and dotted your Is and everybody's on the same page. Unless we go to find a plan for a therapy dog, a specific one. Because animals are a huge liability and you can't readily control, like you can, they've got that wild instinct in them too. So and even with, I just, because with service dogs, they're trained by professional from the moment they're born. Whereas therapy, they're not. And what if it goes through some sort of trauma and it's triggered here?
I can tell that story.
Yes. I mean, I love, I love dogs, obviously I've trained two of my own, but they're, you gotta be careful.
I was wondering if we could just take items 10 and 11, because that's the other non-service animal part, if we could take those out of this policy and work on drafting a policy that is specific to non-service animals. Because you already have the procedures in place. So I think, like Ms. Rowe said, it would be really good to have a policy that is specific to the non-service animals, the therapy animals. And, you know, I understand that MSBA doesn't have that, but, you know, if we can get model language from another school that does have that and work on that, could we, do you see a reason why we would need to have these items 10 and 11 in here when we could just put those into a non-service animal policy? That way we could, you know, move forward with this and approve, you know, kind of a clean copy of the service animal portion and be working on the non-service animal. Does that make sense?
Yes. Mr. Dorn?
I would need to check with legal and check with MSBA. I'm assuming there's a reason they put it in. You know, there's probably a faith, you know, reason that they put that in there. So I would need to check with them to see if it could be removed. But again, the assumption is that they put it in there because of faith and that you just, they're being, they've done their diligence through their attorneys. We would do the same through ours if we need to be able to remove that. I could talk with MSBA to see the reasoning behind including that particular statement and then get back to you. I do have two other documents for the, for therapy dogs, for comfort dogs, that I could bring forward in the future for you to be able to review. Those do talk specifically about item number 10 inside here, and they do talk about just regular comfort dogs, they're, you know, therapy dogs coming into the building.
Okay. And then number 12 under liability, A, about the sixth word in there, it's an owner of a service animal or non-service animal, that probably needs to be, those three words probably need to be taken out because we don't, we're not dealing with non-service animals here.
I think that might still be good to have in though, in case somebody like, if you, if I smuggled in my pet gerbil and it bites you, you know, like, I'm still responsible for the bite of my pet gerbil, even if, you know, so even if it wasn't sanctioned by the school, if somehow I stuff a kitten in my backpack or whatever, I'm still responsible for whatever damage my smuggled animal does.
I wonder how many, how many times that's actually happened.
I'm sure.
Especially in elementary.
Yeah, we probably don't want to know.
Yeah.
Or it could be added under the therapy dog because it says, or, or non-service, add non-therapy or, because we're dealing strictly with service animal in this policy.
Since we're looking at that, so that's why I bring that up, Mr. Dorn, you can check on that too.
Yep, good point. We will find out.
Oh, should we not approve the second reading at this time then on 5:35, not just 5:34 and wait till you come back with the modified version of?
Just a second reading, we don't need to.
Nothing's done with it, you're just, you're correct, Director. There's nothing that's done with it, it's simply you're just, for your knowledge, if there's something that needs to be able to be changed, I'll pull it back off again prior to the third reading.
And we don't need to make any recommendations or votes on this because it's the second reading.
Correct.
Third reading we will. Okay. Anything else under those? All right. We're gonna move on to the MSBA planning meeting for superintendent search. Ms. Dorn, let's take a good, let's take until, are you still with us? Barb, good evening.
Good evening.
We take a little bit of break until we can get up, move around for a few minutes and then come back and join you.
Yep, sounds good.
About 7:25, well, 7:24, 7:25 we'll be back. How's that sound?
All right. Look forward to seeing you then.
Ms. Dorn, are you in, if you're in tomorrow, obviously we don't know if school's in, but I'll get ahold of you.
Sounds good.
All right. Congratulations to our new board members, to the new chair, vice chair, all the positions. Congratulations to you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I will resume it.
The owl still picks up our conversation though, so.
The owl, but.
Well, I was wondering, you don't have to unmute yourself in here, right?
Right.
Okay.
Lisa, is it out there? Lisa?
Yes, hello. If, the recording will continue to run, but you can mute the in-person Chromebooks that the owl doesn't pick up the, this conversation.
Will it be streaming, will be online streaming then too?
We will be, it's, it's not being streamed this evening, we're just recording and we're posting the recording tomorrow.
I like to support their hats.
Craig, is Craig in it? Is Craig here too?
He was on here, yep, so I think he's.
Greg, Dorn? Hello. Have you seen Craig?
I see he's on the, on the call. I see him over here on attendees. I don't see his face, but I do know that he's on, so.
Thank you for sticking with us.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm forward to hearing it, so we have a couple of questions, I'm sure.
Well, it was when I was a kid.
We're excited to go forward with this and through your leadership and you and everybody else at MSBA to find the great superintendent for our school. So, right ahead.
Thank you very much. It's really nice to see everyone again. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I know that Craig and Amy from MSBA and myself all really appreciate the opportunity to meet with you virtually as well. Minnesota weather is very unpredictable, so thank you very much for allowing us to join you this way. It's very, very helpful and much safer than the other option for us. So we do have quite a bit to cover tonight and I know that you have the meeting packet in front of you. One question before I move forward is, would you like me to screen share everything or do you have the packets on your own devices or hard copies where that won't be necessary?
Does everybody have, everybody have a copy in front of them or you want a screenshot?
I have it on my phone because my.
What would you like, on your phone or?
No, what?
No, I'm about to die though.
You can have this if it's in there.
Yeah.
I brought my own, Nikki, you can have this.
It's towards the back there. Barb, I think we can just follow along. How's that?
That sounds great. Thank you very much. I would also like to congratulate the officers for Red Wing Public Schools. Thank you very much for your leadership and to all of the board members for all the hard work that you put in for the students in your district. Nice to meet you, Therese and Rachel. I think you were in attendance at last week's workshop, correct? Okay, great. Well, it's nice to see you again. And I think in the interest of time, we won't go around the room with introductions, being that we already had a chance to get to know one another a little bit better last week, but welcome. Thank you and again, congratulations. So for purposes of tonight, I'd like to ask that question that I heard someone ask earlier, would you like me to refer to you as directors, mister or miss, or by first name? What would you prefer the rest of the workshop be tonight?
Workshop, you can be informal. I think at boards, I've come from a boards, I like to have, the board is a position that they've earned, so they should be recognized by proper name, proper, if you want to do workshop, we can do first names, fine.
Okay. And you will be making some decisions tonight, so technically it isn't a workshop, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't going to offend anyone if I was more informal using your first names and you can certainly call me Barb as well. So again, thank you very much. Those are some of the housekeeping things this evening. If we're going to get started, the first thing I'd like to do is just review the process very briefly. Now here's where last week's workshop gives you a leg up on many of the planning meetings that MSBA conducts. We covered a lot of material last week and you gave me some great information to help shape where we are going with this superintendent search. The two things I'd really like to emphasize though, as far as reviewing the process, excuse me, are again, how important the open meeting law and the Government Data Practices Act will be throughout the entirety of the search process. That's one thing we emphasized last week and I'll bring it up often enough that there's no way you're going to forget about it, but that is one of the things you need to keep in mind. The other is the board ownership of this. Both Craig and I spoke about this last week. This is your process. We will guide you, we will make recommendations, we will answer every and any question that you might have. However, in the end, of course, you're the ones making the decisions and hopefully you'll feel comfortable making very informed decisions and you will shape this to fit the Red Wing Public School system, your students, your staff, your parents, your community. So we're really looking forward to that and we'll very often remind you that this is yours to drive because you are in the driver's seat of this entire process. Was there anything from the workshop last week that you had questions on regarding the process and how it's going to unfold? Is there anything you'd like to address before we get into the specifics with timeline and brochure and things such as that? All right. Sounds great. And if you ever do have a question, I've got my eye on the chat box as well, so raise your hand and I'll make sure to get everyone's questions answered throughout the evening tonight as well. Now, the very first thing we always need to address in the process is the timeline. So if we could move forward to that, in your packet, it says Red Wing Public Schools Superintendent Search Timeline, and this is a draft. I'd like to cover a few things on the early part of the search and then if it's okay, Jim, I'd like to turn it back over to you when we get to the dates that are highlighted in yellow to facilitate a conversation with the board members in terms of selecting the dates and the times that work best for all of you to meet in that regards. So I'll just start by saying that we are meeting tonight on January 3rd for the planning meeting. One brief question, is this a special meeting or is this part of the regular meeting?
The regular meeting.
Okay, so I'm gonna change that to say regular meeting on the very first line there. You will notice that we are planning to open the stakeholder survey on Thursday, January 5th. We plan to leave that open until January 26th, so it's open for three weeks. Also during that timeframe is when Craig will be working on the community engagement portion of this, and I know he's got some information to share with you later on down the agenda. So those three weeks are really crucial. We want to get as many people involved in this as possible upfront. And we'll talk more specifically about the survey, but that's the timeline for the survey. Similarly, on January 16th, we are suggesting that's when we would host the Q and A with MSBA session. That is something we did talk about a little bit last week. It's a Zoom link that MSBA will share with the district. We'd like to get questions in advance from stakeholders because not everyone is available at 4 o'clock on a Monday afternoon. I do recognize that that is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday, however, we are not a school board, so we are able to meet that day and it's an optional thing if any of the board members want to join us. If you don't join us that day live, I would encourage you however to watch. If you don't join us that day live, I would encourage you however to watch the session when the link is posted on the district website. We want to make sure that you're on the same page with the way that we answered questions about the search process. But that is the date we're planning to hold it, and again, it's being recorded, and we'll make sure that people have that link before if they want to join us, and they'll have the recording after if they want to watch it during the entirety of the search. We're going to post this next Monday, January 9th, so we'll get out of the gate early. You again are one of the first searches of the year that we're starting, so that will be posted January 9th on all of the sites we discussed last week, MSBA's, MASA, EdPost, as well as Revelus, our database and post positions in this nationwide. We're going to, a little further down the agenda, address where else you might want that posted if there's any national sites. You might like to have the opportunity positioned as well, but we'll get to that. And we're suggesting that it close on February 26th. That is a seven-week window for applicants to throw their hat in the ring, fill out all of the information. I think that is good timing. Obviously, as we get later and later in the search season, districts don't have the luxury of having it open for seven weeks, and so sometimes it's only open for two. That's pretty tight. Sometimes districts want it open longer, eight to nine weeks. We think that's not necessary, and it might actually put you a little bit behind the schedule if we went into March or April, March with that deadline. So, those are the dates on the top that I'm comfortable with. MSBA would recommend those dates. So, if everyone's okay with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jim and discuss when you would like to conduct your interview training with MSBA, as well as discussing the stakeholder report. Now, we've purposely suggested beginning in February 21st, because if the stakeholder survey closes January 26th, that gives us plenty of time to incorporate the results from the community engagement sessions, as well as prepare that stakeholder report to present to you and send it to you in advance of that meeting, so you have time to review it. So, Jim, I'll turn it over to you if you'd like to determine the date and time the board would like to meet for interview training and stakeholder review of that report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Morris. We will leave the 26th in there, but through our discussion, we may want to come back to that end date just for now, because we have spring break in March, so before the board goes forward here, I want to hear what they have to say.
It's February 26th.
February 26th. Did I say March?
You said the spring break is in March.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, as you're looking farther down, the yellow ones, what we're going to talk about, they may come into play, is what I'm saying. So, we may have to, we may have to adjust the 26th, we may not, based upon what we talked about, so. You ever got the schedules in front of you? You got the timeline in front of us for? You just want us to talk about that February 21st, 23rd, March 1st, yellow one first?
Yes, try to find a date and time that works for everyone to be present for that meeting, and that's usually about an hour and a half to a two-hour meeting for that.
And I don't know that what we have for workshop on the 21st, does it have to be a special meeting or could be a workshop?
We would recommend these all be special meetings, because you'll be making decisions at them, and it's specific to your search. It's not general training purposes and things such as that. So, because of the specificity of it, we'd recommend special meetings. Or as part of a regular meeting, if you have fewer amount or not much business at a regular meeting, we could do the same thing and be at the tail end of your regular meeting, generally though not a workshop.
Okay, I'll start. The 23rd that week works for me, that Thursday. 27th, 22nd does not. Let's ask Wednesday anyway.
I will be in Texas, so can I participate virtually?
Yes.
Just make sure before the Wednesday.
Right.
Wednesday, Wednesday, before the meeting. Okay, and everybody needs to come a little early to meet my new grandson, so. He's got to be adorable, I already know.
So.
So, you're saying not the 21st, which is our, we're having a meeting on the 21st.
We can do it the 21st. If you want to do it at the tail end of that, we'll just keep our. We'll just keep.
It's like two and a half hours. I think we're going to have to do another meeting.
Yeah.
Is there two and a half hours, Barb?
An hour and a half, two hours, she said.
It usually takes an hour and a half to two hours. Sometimes though, if there's a lot of discussion, particularly around the stakeholder report, it can go lower, longer. One board I went with one time spent three and a half hours discussing the stakeholder input and what that meant and what they were going to do with it. So, it can go longer. Other boards are done in an hour, so it depends.
I'm over to the 23rd.
Do we pick one date or?
No, I can't do the 23rd.
Can't do the 23rd?
I could do the 27th, 28th, or the 1st.
I would like to do the 27th, because Mondays are like my school birthday. I know I don't put anything else on my calendar on Mondays.
I'm out of town that week, so I'd have to log in virtual myself, so.
That's okay. We'll let you, because we're going to let me, so we have to let you.
I'm not going to see your grandbaby by the time. So.
Or would Wednesday, the 22nd, would that work for you?
Let's ask Wednesday.
Oh, that's why you said that one, no, okay.
Hate to get into a church night special. Well, let's go to the 27th. I'll be virtual.
So, I.
So.
I'll probably be virtual the 21st.
Will everybody else, the 27th work for everybody else? Monday, the 27th?
Are we saying 6:00 PM?
What time works for you, Barb?
I can be there anytime. Craig, I'm sure you can as well. Okay.
6:00 work then? Should we do 6:00, just a special board meeting?
Terrific. Thank you so much. February 27th at 6:00 PM. Then the application deadline, at least at this point, is February 26th. Now, on the 27th is when MSBA will review all of those applications to ensure that they are complete. We want to make sure that all of the information has been provided that is needed. And then the next day, on February 28th, is when we would give access to board members to take a look at the applications if you are interested through a secure link in the cloud. So, if you are comfortable with technology, it's a very easy process to set up a username and password and take a look at those applications beginning on February 28th. If anyone's not comfortable with technology, you could let me know, and we could certainly find a way to have you review them in hard copy as well. But the plan right now would be on the 28th to give access to all of the board members to go in and look at all of those applications. The next date then that you'd need to set something up, and I'll turn it over to Jim once more, is that finalist selection meeting. That's the night that you would name your finalists. MSBA will come in with our recommendations. That's when we will refer to the candidates as candidate A, B, C, et cetera. You will know in advance who we're going to be recommending to see if it aligns with who you have expressed interest in individually yourself. And then at the close of that meeting is when you name the finalists, and you actually say that's who we are interviewing. So, that's a big meeting as well, but it will give you enough time between February 28th and that week of March 13th to hopefully go through all of the applications yourselves and then bring questions that evening to MSBA. So, Jim, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Do you want to stay in line with Anna saying on Monday, second Monday, do a chances on Monday? Mondays work for everybody?
Yeah.
Did you say yes? How about 6:00 PM on the 13th?
Terrific, and I'll confirm these one more time. Amy is on, and she's making changes to the timeline as we speak, so she's updating it with your decisions. And then your first round of interviews, if you select your finalists on the evening of March 13th, in theory, you could conduct your interviews beginning the 15th, 16th, 17th. You don't want too much time to elapse between naming your finalists and beginning to interview them. So, usually at least a day or two is all you might need, and it's up to you. But most boards, if you interview six folks, will do that in two different days, because interviewing six people one day is exhausting, for those of you who have been through this before. So, you may want to plan for three and three. And the dates, if they're consecutive, it's helpful if it's a Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, Friday. It doesn't have to be that way. You just don't want too much time to elapse between your first three candidates and your next three candidates. So, that's entirely up to you. You could also do them all in one day. Sometimes there's a board that says, we're going to power through, Craig's done this too, I know. We're going to power through and spend nine, nine hours interviewing and deliberating in one day. You can do that. It's just much more challenging, but it certainly is your choice. So, however you'd like to schedule round one interviews, Jim, I'll turn it over to you again.
This is, this is where it's going to get hard.
This is where it's going to get tough.
Having to take time off of work.
How about, let me throw something out here.
So, they are during the day?
No, they're not.
They wouldn't have to be.
They can be whenever we want them to be.
Can I also just say I am out of town starting the 23rd?
Okay, that's good to know.
And that's, so it would be good if we could get both first round and second round in before then.
Well, I'm going to be out on the 18th, so. But can we do one?
Oh, the 18th isn't on the list, or you're leaving.
No, for the second round now.
Let's focus on the first round, yes.
Barb, let me back up here a minute here. We're getting into the spring break thing that we're talking about here that's going to conflict us. Let's go back on the 13th. What happens if, can you do the Thursday, can you do Tuesday the 7th? That meeting instead of the 13th?
Let me take a look at the master calendar here for searches. So, you're looking instead at.
Not available that third full week of March.
Okay. So, you're thinking March 7th?
Well, I'm just going to think that till we pick our finalists, interview the night, first round. It might just have to be a long night, and then do a second round on the 13th or 14th. When everybody's around.
The 14th of March, just an FYI, if it's applicable, that is township election day. I don't know if that would be in your district or not, but if it's township election day on the 14th, if you and Red Wing will have that, you can't meet between 6:00 and 8:00 PM.
City of Red Wing does not have townships, but we have seven townships that service us. Does that affect us?
If any of them have elections, then you cannot meet between 6:00 and 8:00. Now, we've had boards that have done interviews until 6:00, and then they've come back at 8:00 to start their deliberations, as long as you're not in that two-hour window if any of those townships do have elections. But if they don't, you're fine to meet that night, so. It's possible though that townships that you're going to run into that.
If those first interviews are that, one of those combinations of days, that week of the 15th, 16th, 17th, and then the second round was that week of the 20th, 21st, 22nd, it's that Red Wing Spring Break essentially starts on Friday, the 24th, so that's when.
You said you're going the 18th.
I am. I'm gone that week. I'm gone the week before.
The week before spring break, okay.
So, but what if we did the, I mean, I know you, Barb, what would you recommend is a good time between first and second rounds? Because if we did the first round, like say this 15th and 16th, is there any harm in doing the second round after spring break? That's, I know that's.
You're going to be going to 27th, right, Jennifer?
I'm gone through, yes, through the 29th. Actually through the 30th.
So, I'm, I'm going to throw it back out here again. Maybe we.
What about the 16th, Thursday?
I'm out of town, I'm out of town somewhere where I don't have any internet.
And we all have to be there in one way, shape, or form.
The risk, the risk is simply this. Once candidates are announced, they're exposed. And with that exposure comes risk, both for the candidate and for you. Oftentimes, candidates are willing to put themselves out there if they believe there's a reasonable chance they will move forward. It also puts their district at some risk, because it unnerves people, right? That their leaders may be leaving them. And so, you don't want to have them sitting out there in limbo for a long time. That's what's at risk. So, you may have a really good candidate you're strong on. They may not be willing to sit in that unknown sort of limbo state for a long period of time. You may lose a good candidate. That's what's at risk.
Is there? Back up the application deadline and make it a five or a six-week window, and back everything up a week or two. Do that too.
Good then.
Yeah, yeah. That would give us all a little bit more breathing room too, and then we could do first round and second rounds, right? We could even do the first rounds.
Do the first round on 6th and 7th?
On the 31st of March?
No, we're trying to get ahead of that.
Still spring break.
Are we trying to do first, first round on the 13th?
Well, I was thinking we do final, finalists on the 13th. Is there a way we can do the finalists on the 13th?
Do you have to change the 27th meeting without change then? Or would that just go in?
We might have to change that.
Just if, if the date would stay the same, just the, like title and what we're discussing?
Well, we might move the, I have to move the 27th earlier, but.
But we still keep the 27th as a viable date for?
tentative.
Okay. Well, but, so here's a question. So, I'm gone from the 21st of February to the 1st of March. So, if I, I'm trying to remember how this worked with the interviews. I mean, I'm going to be there. Virtual. I am. Can I be virtual to do the interviews? That's my question. Or do I need to be there?
You could do that virtually. You would simply need to let, let, it had to be posted where you're going to be in order for you to have a vote, and that needs to be posted three days before the meeting. So, if the location that you're going to be at, joining virtually, is posted three days in advance, then yes, you can watch virtually, participate virtually, and vote virtually as well.
Well, I'm going to throw something, I'm going to throw something really out here. Move the application date back a week to the 19th. We do our training, not on the 27th, but on the 21st. Our school board will just have a light agenda. We do interviews, first round of interviews, March 6th and 7th, Monday, Tuesday. Finalist on March 13th. Is that too long out?
Well, first though is, is the.
Craig, or should we do it the 7th?
March 6th is a regular voting night, so I don't know if.
7th, or do the interviews the 7th and 9th? Or do them all on the 9th and get them done, and do it on the 13th with our finalist? Start at 4:00 on the 13th, on the 9th. Do 4:00, do 5 or 6, whatever. Do them, and list our finalists that night, and come back on the 13th and get her done.
That could, if, if the board's agreeable, that would certainly, that's doable, yes.
Say those dates.
Okay, let me back up here, okay. We're going to move the meeting from the 27th to the 21st.
The special board.
It's going to be part of a school board meeting. Okay?
And Tommy, again, that is to train us for interviewing?
It's for, for interview, interview training, yes.
And discuss stakeholder report. And I have a question about the stakeholder survey online. Are we encouraged to get that out through our, like?
Social media?
Yeah, I think social medias, and, and so we're, we're also encouraged. So, we're going to get that survey through our email, be able to do that?
Okay. We'll post it, and the district will share it in their social media, and then you can share the district's posts on your own page. Great, thanks for asking.
We get the training on the 21st?
And I'm going to be late that night, but I, I don't think that we should.
Training will be later.
Right, the training will be later. I'm flying in that night, so I don't arrive until 8:30, but I'll just watch what I've missed and get on right as soon as I land.
You said the 23rd does not work for you, of February?
Oh, I can do this. Oh, the 23rd, I, I can't, but I could if I had to.
Training?
Yeah.
Wait now.
I'm just, I'm just talking about having a lot on Monday here, fair enough meeting here. Okay, let's just.
I could do the 23rd.
All right, let's.
So, maybe we should do that, because I don't want, I mean, that's a long meeting.
Let's hold a special meeting on February 23rd instead of the 27th and 21st. Okay, does that work for everybody?
That's the training.
Does that work for you? Whatever time you want, whatever you work.
Well, if it's not school board meeting day, I prefer earlier the better, especially with.
5 o'clock. How about 5:00?
5:00.
23rd, does that work for you, Barb? Great?
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay, so we're off on the 27th. Yay!
Okay, good, I'm writing on this in.
Okay. Then. Then, we'll hold our first round of interviews.
But we have to have our meeting to select the candidates. So, that could be that, like at our, how long do we need for that meeting, Barb? The meeting to select the candidates?
If that goes smoothly, it's about an hour to hour and a half. If that goes smoothly, it's about an hour to hour and a half. If you are struggling over which candidates to interview because you have such a strong pool, it might take longer, but generally speaking, on average, it's probably an hour to hour and a half meeting.
Okay, do you wanna do that on the 27th?
That's what I was saying.
Then, or do you wanna do that?
I think that makes sense.
I do too.
27th, no.
And then we could do that at 5:00.
Are we announcing the finalists at that on the 27th? So get back to Craig's thing, we may wanna do it on the 7th. Interview the 9th. Finalist on the 13th. I'm just trying to...
Or are we gonna, are we going to do two nights of interviews, three and three?
I say we get it done in one night.
Or one day? Because I'm retired, so I'm not gonna say anything about when all of this is taking place because I can see my schedule, but everybody else that's working, you know, I wanna know what you all think.
Uh, I would rather do it in one day too. I'm elbows-deep in maple sugar season perhaps, and I'm not gonna know either until Mother Nature. So, but I don't wanna go all night either. So if we have too many, I would rather split it into two days then. But I would like to try and push for the one, if we have a lower amount.
Let's just say we do five candidates. That's an hour. So let's hypothetically, I'm just gonna throw a date, a time out there. 4:00, start at 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, be done.
I, I, I don't wanna muddy the waters here either, but I'm gonna tell you right now, the other thing we're up against, and you all are struggling with this right now. First, I have never had in search season a conversation go any differently than the one we're having right now. You all have, no, seriously, you all have lives, right? And, and schedules conflict. This is a normal conversation. If you're willing to host on one night, I don't think it's a bad thing. Here's why. And I was surprised, no one brought up the weather. It's not a bad idea if you can have a date and have a contingency date in mind just in case. I'm just saying, because you don't know where these candidates will be coming from. Most likely, they're gonna be within driving distance. Or maybe someone who is perhaps a good, you know, a good distance away. But, you know, if you can, if you can set it up so you're gonna interview people on a particular date, but if weather becomes an issue and you have an alternate date, it's not a bad plan.
Good idea.
If we had, like, a lot of candidates, could we use that alternative date perhaps for an additional interview date then? Okay, am I understanding that we anticipate an hour per candidate?
Up to an hour.
Typically, it's one hour per candidate. You'll want 15 minutes in between so that the one candidate can be ushered out and the other candidate ushered in. So you need to plan about every hour and 15 minutes. So if you start at 4, your next one's at 5:15, your next one is at 6:30, your next one is at 7:45. A- and at the conclusion of the interviews, remember, you need to deliberate and decide who to move on to round two. Sometimes that takes 30 minutes, sometimes it takes two hours. It, it's, it's very unpredictable. So if you are going to interview five or six people, I think you need to start much earlier than 4:00 to, in order to be done by perhaps 11:00, 10:30, 11:00 o'clock, if you start earlier than 4.
And logistically, yes, and, and it's good to also think about having some coffee and refreshments for yourselves to be available. Um, I'm not trying to be funny.
No, I know. I get it.
How long are you gone, Treese? When are you back?
I'm gone from the 21st to March 1st.
Okay.
Be coming back March 1st.
Okay. I'm gone the 4th through the 7th.
4th, March through the 7th?
Yeah. Could we, if we did the, if we had our meeting the 27th to determine who we want as our candidate or who we wanna interview, could we interview the 2nd and 3rd, that Thursday, Friday?
I'm all.
I'm gone.
You're gone then?
I'm gone.
Yeah, nevermind. Could we have 8, 9 available?
I can do 7, 8, 9.
I can never do Wednesday because I work in the evenings.
Okay. I'm willing to take some PTO, I mean...
You're willing to what?
I mean, it sounds like one of the things we might have, I might have to do is take some pay time off. And I'm willing to do that. I would rather have, take some PTO on the 9th and just barrel through and start at noon and have some decent time for deliberations. And that way, no, none of our candidates are driving here at 9:00 PM later to interview. That's not...
That's not right either.
Right either, and we'll have to figure out where to do.
But for now, I, for, for now, I, yeah, I think you're... I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily plan to take PTO right now, Pam. You know, you're gonna know on the 27th how many, right?
And I'm flexible enough where I can ask the day before.
Sure, sure.
But I, I'm, I'm just saying, I might just have to buckle down and take some time off in order to get this done, and I would rather do that. And I'd rather do it all in one day than to take three hours of PTO one day. Oh, here's another, I mean, I like the, the 9th, I'd rather, you know, I know that... Can everybody take some extra time and do the 9th?
I couldn't do the 9th, but I could do the 8th or the 10th or...
About 7th. You're going the 7th, Joe.
I, I come back so I could possibly do it.
What time on the 7th?
I can't, I can't make sure until 4 on the 7th.
Till 4?
I could do during the day on the 7th.
She could do it.
She can't start till 4.
Oh, I thought you said you were starting at 4.
No, and I can't take PTO as quickly as you, we're kind of months out.
How about, how about Monday the 6th during the day?
I don't know.
Okay.
And you're gone the week of the 20th? Yes, right 20th, that's the week you're going.
The last two weeks.
You can't do the 9th, Anna, even remotely? I could do remotely. I, um, I'm not available even remotely after 7:30 on the 9th.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can somebody, can everybody start at noon on the 9th?
But I could do earlier.
I can? Oh, no, that's the day off.
On the 9th, yeah.
9th is...
I'm not gonna know until...
We need you there.
I know. Dark time, 4:00 PM is about the earliest I could go.
You think the maples flowing by then?
I don't know.
When do they usually flow?
In between end of February and end of March.
Soon as it's...
So I need the daylight time where that.
Well, we gotta couple the date, and in the last two weeks...
I could do virtual. I could do virtual in the woods.
Okay.
There you go.
Let's do, let's do the 9th. Um, let's just tentatively plan on noon. We'll do more on the 27th.
Yeah, 'cause if there's only four, we can push that back a little.
Yes, we gotta be done by 7:00. For, for Anna here, she, she says she can't do until 7:00. Gotta be gone.
Okay, so would I be putting down for the 9th then?
Put noon down for now.
But what is that, round one of interviews?
Round one.
Thank goodness for pencils.
And then?
Starting at noon, you said?
Yes, but depending on, you know, if we go backward from when Anna has to be done, depending on how many people, maybe we could start a little bit later to accommodate your, you know what I mean? If I don't, if I have the virtual option, I'll take that automatically. We're not gonna, 'cause mine literally goes off the weather, so.
Okay.
Okay, so...
And then we still have the 13th.
13th is our finalist night.
Round two, so...
Everybody else said they'd be there.
Yeah.
And we're gonna probably plan on the 14th as a snow day for one of them that doesn't work. That doesn't, the 9th doesn't work, we might have to do the 13th at some point. Let's hope weather is on our side.
Wait, what did you just say?
Wait.
Snow day?
I'm just saying, we just talked about having another day available in case, a backup date in case of bad weather, so...
13th is round two, 6 to 8? Or 5? Was there a time determined for the 13th?
I think we had 6:00 now.
Okay.
And if we need to, we might have to move one of the dates to the 14th if...
So on March 13th, you'll interview your finalists, the second round, correct? So if you start at 6, you'll have one at 6, one at 7:15, one at 8:30, and you'll start, correct? So...
Let's move 5:00 then, let's move 5:00.
Yeah. You need at least half, a half hour between the conclusion of, we think, a third interview. You usually have three, not always, but if you have, you need a half hour in there for MSBA to tabulate all of the input from board members and get it back to you for deliberations. So if you can start earlier than 6, I'd recommend it.
Can everybody start on the 13th? What time can everybody start on the 13th?
I can start as early as 9:00 AM.
Same.
How about, can you start at 4:00 on Monday the 13th?
Yeah.
Let's do 4:00.
Okay.
Let's recap. Let's recap here.
I'm wondering if we need to meet on the 27th? Or if those, if we're choosing the candidates, if that could happen on the 6th? Or, but maybe it's easier to keep at the 27th. I'm just thinking so it's closer to the day of the interview for that point of not having it out in the public for a crazy long time. Because we're already meeting on the 6th.
Gotcha.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's a good point, good point. So then we want to...
Thoughts? Okay, Monday, March 6th?
If we, for our, need the candidate deliberate whatever, March 6th, does that still work?
Yes, if you, if you select your finalists on March 6th, which is a Monday, and then you interview them on Thursday the 9th, that actually is a nice amount of time between announcing them and interviewing them. And then the 9th at noon, you'd plan to spend all day interviewing four, five, six people, deliberate, and then on March 13th, beginning at 4:00 PM, you'd do round two, uh, which would be perhaps three people, maybe two. And then the 14th is a backup date for a snow days in case either of those need to be moved.
Let me just, we're gonna, we're gonna advertise for a noon special meeting. But we may be, yeah, we can move it back later if we need to, okay. So let's recap here. So, so the 23rd of, the 19th, we're gonna close application on the 19th, correct? Okay?
19, 20. The only reason, I paused for just a minute because on the, if we close it on the 19th, you will have it on the 21st, and you'll start looking at the candidates on the 21st. So then you'll still have time between the 21st and the 6th to take a look at all of those, which should be plenty of time.
We have a meeting scheduled for the 23rd at 5:00 PM right now too. That's what I thought, that's what we were gonna do then.
That was the interview training.
That's the interview training.
Okay, and the 20th, the 27th is nothing then, that's all.
Right, okay. So the window is January 9th to February 19th now, correct?
Yes, and so the 27th, oh, I'm gonna erase it for the third time now.
So I'm gonna read to you what I have on my timeline, and then Amy will make these adjustments, so I'll make sure I've got it right. So, uh, the posting will be January 9th to February 19th. Then on February 23rd at 5:00 PM will be interview training and discussing the stakeholder reports. Then you will receive, if the application deadline is the 19th, we'll start looking at them on the 20th. You'll receive them on the 21st of February. On March 6th at 6:00 PM is when you will name your finalists. And that's also when we finalize the interview questions and those sorts of things. So March 6th, that's 6. March 9th at noon, you begin your first round of interviews, March 9th at noon. And round two would be March 13th at 4:00 to conduct second round interviews. And then the 14th of March is just a backup for snow. Does that reflect what you decided?
Good for everybody?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that our final answer?
Now, the 6th, March 6th is a regular school board meeting night, but let's really keep our agendas super duper quick and light. I almost wonder if we should move our school board meeting back to, well, 5:30 so that we can start this at 6?
We don't need to do a workshop that night.
It would just, I just, we just need to post it correctly.
Correct, but we're, we're gonna name our finalists. Now, that night are we gonna discuss, discuss, on the 6th, we're gonna discuss our finalists, is that it?
We're gonna select.
Correct.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, we'll work on the agenda, keeping that down.
We'll either have no workshop that night and move the school board meeting to 5, so keep 5:00 there. And then 6:00 we'll...
So attempt to put 5:00 on the 6th as a possible starting time for our school board meeting.
Yeah.
So I just wanna finalize to make sure that I'm listing these correctly. Um, on February 23rd at 5:00 PM, that is a regular meeting. And this will be at the end of your regular meeting, right? So that February 23, 5, regular meeting?
Oh, that's a special meeting to do the...
Special meeting.
Um, interview training, s- reports and all that.
All right, thank you. I still had the 27th, okay, so. February 23, 5 PM is a special meeting. Uh, March 6th is a regular meeting. Should I put 5:00 PM or should I list 6:00 PM on the timeline?
5:00 PM for now.
5:00 PM, March 6th, regular meeting. And then March 9th at noon, that's a special meeting, and March 13th at 4:00, that is also a special meeting. Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations. This is the top part of the planning meeting, it really is.
I told you of spring break, we kinda throw it in there a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much. What we'll do is make all of these changes, and then tomorrow I will send it to all of you for review. And you can let me know with a second, third, fourth set of eyes on it if we've captured everything. If I haven't heard anything by, um, we'll probably go Friday at noon, then we will post it as is. So it'll be an opt-out that if you don't get back to us with any changes or corrections, we'll assume it's okay. So, um, Friday at noon, okay?
And, and Ann asked a really important question about formulating the interview questions. So we'll have the feedback and stakeholder input. Barb, would those be part of the interview, those occur after the interview training, correct?
Uh, yes, actually, on February 23rd, the interview training and discussing stakeholder report, I will bring a draft of interview questions based on your hiring criteria and the results of that stakeholder report. So you'll see draft questions that night on the 23rd.
I'm really excited about the timeframe that we got it in two and a half months, so to speak. That way, and I think, don't get me wrong, I think I'm excited about it because people are interested, they're gonna apply.
I didn't think it could be done, I'm excited it can.
So I like it, I like it.
It's a good timeline, it's a very good timeline. So my only question then, if you look toward the bottom of the timeline, if you are pleased with your second round candidates and you choose someone to make an offer to on the evening of March 13th, it will then say March 14th, negotiations will begin. Do you know yet whether you will have a board designate negotiate on your behalf with that candidate or if you'll have a committee doing it? You know how it says board committee or designate begins negotiations? If it is a committee, then we need to post this as a special meeting. And so that's something I'm curious, if you've thought how you might handle that, um, negotiating with your candidate.
And that could be closed session because it's negotiations.
No?
No. It cannot, the only close, timing, closing meetings for negotiations with like bargaining units, and this person is an at-will employee, so you cannot close negotiations. So if it's a committee, we recommend it be posted as an open meeting, and that sometimes slows the process down because you need to make sure that it fits your finalist's calendar and that they can come that day to negotiate. The option otherwise is for a committee or the board as a whole to have a contract prepared and ready to go. You give parameters and you say, "We're willing to start in this range for a salary compensation package in this area", depending upon experience and qualifications, of course. So you've had the conversation in advance and you are prepared on the 14th to even send a contract to your selected choice to review. And one person can negotiate on your behalf. Of course, they have to bring it back to the board for discussion and approval. But if you have appointed that person, usually it's the board chair, if you've given them the parameters, you have a contract, you've preliminarily approved, then one person can do it without it having to be an open meeting. Does that make sense? It's your choice though, however you'd like to proceed, so you let me know.
So where, I'm trying to remember if that was the contract language, all of that. Is that something that we can get samples on from MSBA or what is the protocol procedure?
Yes, that's a great question, thank you. Uh, we have a model contract that is... Uh, we have a model contract that is, um, approved by both MSBA and MASA. We both endorse it, it's a good foundation to start with. So I can send that to all board members to take a look at, so you can see what we typically encourage folks to use as their template for the contract. That being said, every district puts their own spin on it, and may have previous contracts that they want to include language from, or your counsel, your legal counsel may want to include some things in there specific to Red Wing. But I can certainly send everybody the template. Um, it's in our training materials, that training packet, you will get the copy that night as well. Depends how far in advance you want it, but I can send it at any time.
Yeah, we haven't even had that discussion yet, so we need to do that. I don't know if that's tonight's thing we should do, or.
One thing I don't wanna lose sight of, and I think our former superintendent, I mean, we are working all, in all of our contracts about that healthcare cap.
Yep.
And I can't remember if Superintendent Anderson had that healthcare cap, just like the.
Didn't, because that was introduced at the last, after you approved his last contract.
Right, so is that something we might wanna consider for the superintendent coming in? Is, you know, that cap, like the teachers have? So anyway, something to think about, because our healthcare costs are exorbitant.
I will leave this tag currently, that says March fourteenth, it's board committee or designate, so it leaves the door open for you to think about this and decide at a later date. Do you have a board meeting already scheduled in March that you can approve the contract? If you're able to start negotiating on the fourteenth, perhaps within a week or so, is there a board meeting on the calendar? Or could you call one, so that you lock someone in March?
Yes, we have a discussion, we have a regular school board meeting on the twentieth of March.
Would that be okay if I put March twentieth in there, regular meeting, that you will approve the employment contract?
I know some, neither way may be there, but that's still a regular school board meeting, so.
Barb, as you're thinking, then they could announce the selection of a candidate pending, then the approval of a final contract offer? Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. Okay, so March twentieth, regular board meeting, you would approve the employment contract. I would think six days is more than enough. And if you have the right candidate, you want to lock them in, so, uh, that's great. So I will get this to you once Amy's made all the changes, and you can let us know before noon on Friday if you need changes made. But thank you very much, this is always the toughest part of the planning meeting. So congratulations, you did great, and thank you, Jim, for facilitating that. Uh, very, very helpful.
Let's, uh, let's just talk real quick about the contract. Who, who wants to be involved in it, or doesn't wanna be involved? Anybody, you wanna have it now, or you wanna have it down the road?
I think, I think it would be good to have everybody have a chance to look at the contracts, like especially like Rachel and Therese, that may not have looked at contracts before for the district, you know, versus like, I don't watch tonight.
I'm not talking about the contract at all, I'm talking about who's gonna negotiate. That's all, we can, we'll, we'll work as a group on the contract. So.
Yeah, I don't care. I mean, I've done it.
You and I did it last time with the interim.
Yeah, and we did Superintendent Anderson's last contract.
They weren't done it.
You weren't here yet?
But was there any other contracts?
I was here.
Uh-huh.
Okay, well, I, I'm happy to be a part of it. I don't, I don't wanna negotiate solo, though, I, I would always prefer to have a second person there, just so that I'm.
I can do it again with, yeah.
Okay.
You want.
Or I'm happy to help too, because I have lots of negotiation experience, but, I mean, I don't need to either, but if you would like.
I just, I just need to have at least one other person.
For now, it'll be good.
All right.
Because you still need four more to approve a contract.
Is someone from human resources there then as well? I don't know. Barb, does somebody from human resources come to that?
Great question, every district does it differently. There are some districts that want the HR director in on all of the contract negotiations. Other districts want their legal counsel in on all of it. And others are comfortable having the board simply, uh, negotiate just as the board. So, again, that's entirely up to you, we've seen it done lots and lots of different ways.
Okay. I don't think it would hurt to have legal counsel involved.
They'll be involved in the draft of the contract.
Yeah, look at it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need HR, I think we've got a contract through MSBA and us that we can, and legal can come up with, uh, product that all of us agree of a line.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Great, thank you. And congrats again, the timeline's tough. So the vacancy brochure, the first thing I wanna do is give a shout out to Anne and Dawn and Martina for their help pulling together that information. We really appreciated that. Uh, there was a lot of great stuff about Red Wing Public Schools, and so we needed to condense it, but we think we got most of, um, or if not all, of what they shared with us in the brochure. I just wanna point out something real quick before we, uh, go through this. Um, I do wanna make an edit on the front page, thanks to Anna for pointing that out. Um, we are going to say that Red Wing Public Schools is located in beautiful east-central Minnesota, or beautiful southeastern Minnesota. Uh, this is from a different brochure, so would you prefer that it be southeastern or south-central? Or eastern?
Southeast.
So, Minnesota.
All right. So, sorry for that, beautiful southeast, southeastern Minnesota, and we'll pull out the interstates, because that was another district as well. So we'll make that.
This is on the beautiful Mississippi.
Yeah.
Scenic Highway sixty-one.
Which would you like, those are both great. In fact, Amy has suggested beautiful, um, Mississippi, so whatever you would like to put in there, that first sentence, we will adjust.
I think Mississippi is nice.
Yeah.
Okay. On the Mississippi River?
Sure.
On the Mississippi River, thank you. All right, so the points of pride were, uh, things that were highlighted by your team that shared that information with us. And again, this is a great opportunity, many, many wonderful things happening in your public school system there. So we wanna have you take a look at those, uh, see if those are okay, if there's anything missing that you as board members would like us to include. Knowing space is limited, so if you'd like to add something, we might need to remove something else. But in general, looking at the left half of the brochure, are you comfortable with what it currently says?
This, uh, I don't, Anne and I were talking before the meeting, did we pass a referendum in two thousand sixteen? I don't remember that.
The building one?
Building, the building, what did you do? G C E D?
No. It was the remodel at Twin Bluff.
Oh, yeah.
Building maintenance, Anne said, okay, thank you, we weren't sure.
We're trying to backtrack years.
Yeah, that was the year we did Twin Bluff.
Thank you for that reminder, yeah.
It was traumatic, so.
Kevin's laughing, he knows. All right, so we're good with the points of pride on the left side there. Obviously, we'll fill in the, uh, deadline, application deadline, and the timeline on the bottom right about the community. Any thoughts on that? Again, it's a wonderful location, and location's a big driver of applications. So is there anything in the community points of pride that's missing? Or are you comfortable with that as well?
When, when, if we're talking about performing arts, um, we should talk about the Sheldon Theater. Or somehow figure out how to put the Sheldon in there, because that's where, I don't know.
Historic Sheldon Theater.
Yes, the historic Sheldon Theater.
I don't know if you need to put the Red and Water Park. That's only open season, only a few. I would place it with, uh, Historic Sheldon Theater.
Well, that, you know, we have a, the artist and residence program at the Anderson Center.
Ooh, yeah.
Red Wing Arts Association. I mean, I think we could be more specific.
Yeah.
The last one, be more specific.
Yes, yes.
Leave the water park, but instead, with the last one listed.
Right. Right. Um, well, the.
Artist and residents.
Artist and residents, uh, at the Anderson Center. What is it, Anderson Center for the Arts? Because all those artists that go there, part of their staying there is they have to do some kind of community engagement activity.
Yeah, so they do a lot with the schools.
They do a lot with the schools.
I don't know that the, we would need, if, since you're needing to cut things for space, I don't know if the Ski Jumping Hall of Fame is as big of a draw. Because like, it's kind of, I, I mean, honestly, at this point, it's kind of tucked away in a corner of the St. James, isn't it? Like, it's not, if, if you're into it, it's a thing, but you know, like, it just.
What if you replace it though with like Welch Ski Village?
Right.
Yeah, that's maybe more of a draw, that, yeah, that we have Welch Ski Village.
Well, we could, maybe what we need to say is, um, we have Welch Ski Village and.
U S Ski Jumping Hall of Fame.
Right, or, and Red Wing Water Park, I don't know.
Olive One.
Olive One. Or recreational opportunities. I mean, we have, really, I mean.
She put that up there.
Hiking on Himichka, like.
She did that. Anne has included the verbiage that they sent us originally with a lot more information in there. So if they'd like us to take out some other things to accommodate more of those, uh, we can certainly do that.
So Nikki, I'm gonna ask you, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, um, when we're talking about the, um, the Prairie Island, Midewakaton, Dakota community, are you happy with the things that they've highlighted there? Or do you think?
Well, I was gonna make a suggestion about the native gardens. Could you put tribal gardens instead of native gardens? Because there's two gardens, and then, call it the tribal gardens. And Wakaton is the butchered version of our tribe, which the state only recognizes us as, but it's technically Bidewakaton. But we hold an honorable spaces, so I think, until the Bidewakaton is more widely accepted, I think it's just fine to use the Midewakaton version. But otherwise, everything else looks fine to me. On the Prairie Island side of this. I do like the, yeah, thank you. And I, I do like the idea of putting in the Welch skis somehow, because if whoever our applicant is, is a big uphill person, we've all already talked about bluffs trails and parks and marinas, I think having access to ice arenas and ski hills is probably a draw.
So change the U S Ski Jumping Hall of Fame to something about Welsh village, correct?
Welsh.
Yeah.
Ski village, okay. So we're, we'll take that, uh, we'll change that, but, so that still has that bullet point, take out the water park? Did I hear that?
Leave the water park.
How about that's, that's.
How about good skiing county state? Do you want? So leave. In there about the arts, um, artist and residence, Anderson Center, Sheldon Jewel Box Theater, that's gonna take up a lot of room, so we'll need to cut some things in order to get those two or three additional things in that final bullet point.
Also, if we said thriving visual and performing arts community supported by the Anderson Center for the Arts, Red Wing Arts Association, and the Sheldon Theater. Yeah, and Historic Sheldon Theater.
Is there any chance, uh, Therese, you could type that and email it to me, how you just said it?
I sure can.
I can't take notes that quickly, and I don't wanna get it wrong, but that, that sounded really good. And I think that's concise, and it gets all of those key points in there that you want in there. That would be great, okay. So with those changes, are you all right with the, about the community information then? Okay, great, thank you. So then the second page of the brochure, uh, the leadership profile, I wanted to again thank all, um, all seven board members that took this in December, really appreciate your input. So this is a combination of your thoughts based upon the online survey that you took, which is also the next page in your packet where it says X Y Z public schools. I usually put that in there just as a refresher, so board members will recognize that survey. That is the survey that you took. So from that came, um, about seven, about seven, uh, or eight priorities, which then Craig worked on to, I think he worked with, um, both Anne and Dawn, or Anne, I wanna thank you again for your input on that, to come up with ones very specific to Red Wing. So you'll recognize them from the survey, they have been wordsmithed to better fit your community. And so I just wanna give you a moment to read that and see if you're okay with those bullet points, if the board members agree with all of those.
I like, I like him.
And this is the profile which applicants will look at first and foremost, to see if it's something that they feel they're qualified for. Obviously, there is more than this, and we'll continue to include the feedback from the stakeholders in developing interview questions as well as this hiring criteria. Another question I have is where it says, previous superintendent experience preferred but not required. Would you simply prefer to say, previous superintendent experience not required? And the reason I ask is all seven board members selected no in response to that question. Usually, we have a little bit of a division where at least one or two board members say, yeah, we need previous superintendent experience. All of the board members that took the survey said it's not required. So do you want that rephrased, or do you like the way that it currently is stated on the brochure?
I like it not required.
Yeah, yeah. I like it.
Take out the preferred? Previous superintendent experience not required?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
Now, the superintendent license is required.
Yes, absolutely. All right, so that will now say, previous superintendent experience not required. Good?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, the financial highlights, again, were sent to us, really appreciate the help on that. Uh, mission, all the visionary in here. Salary and benefits, I do wanna visit about that for a moment, and find out what you would like to say in your brochure. If you go past the hiring criteria survey, you'll see something that says vacancy brochure, salary, language, options. These are some options for you to consider, where it says to be determined on the second page of the brochure. And, uh, these are the four that boards usually consider, and you can change these a little bit if you'd like. When you read through these, obviously, you're in a little bit of a unique circumstance in that you have an interim superintendent. So if you're interested in the first one, for example, you might want to say, uh, the superintendent's base salary for the twenty-twenty, twenty-one, or twenty-one, twenty-two year, because interim superintendent contracts usually don't reflect the level you might be willing to pay someone for a more permanent position. So there's room to move on that. Uh, but when you look at these four, uh, does anyone on the board have a preference for any of the, the four, one over another?
I like having a dollar number in there, I think that's the current standard to me, anyway, to have a dollar value. Um, I think, yeah, I think like you were saying, the, the problem I had with the first one was that, like you said, it's not really reflective of necessarily where we were. Um, but also, the previous one might not really be either, because Superintendent Anderson had been here for seventeen years, you know?
Ten or eleven.
Okay. Um, I have seventeen in my, anyway. Um, so, at any rate, you know, like, that salary had gone, it wasn't where he started, right? And, you know, obviously inflation and time has changed and whatever, but I don't know that that would really reflect where we're at either. So I would say either the second or third option.
I would agree, I don't like number one at all, yeah.
I do like number one. I know. I'm just thinking, you're gonna use Mr. Anderson's, Mr. Anderson's salary, because we're not gonna use Mr. Norton's. If, because there's an interim. So whatever you put in there. Because I was just kinda looking at the other ones.
Yeah.
With our size of our.
Who cares what his, I mean, salary is. Like, I wanna know what my salary's gonna be, not what, you know what I mean, like.
Okay.
Where, what, where are we starting with this?
Because it, yeah.
I see what you mean.
Especially if they have no experience, and we're not saying that it's, that we're requiring experience, so.
I could go along with number two.
I like the third one, the range, because then you can kind of eliminate people right off the get-go, because if you look, you know, that one that shows like, some have really high salaries, and if they're looking for a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and that's not in our range, you can automatically.
Yeah.
Who's, who's, may I ask, who's speaking?
Oh, that's Rachel.
Okay, hi, thank you. Um, Barb, I'm gonna jump in here, so, you know, I'm kind of a, kind of a geek when it comes to this stuff. Uh, someone was talking about contracts earlier, and I just came off of, interestingly enough, the, uh, Minnesota State College faculty and the two, and, and the, um, education Minnesota faculty are kind of close, so I, there's some kinship there. Um, you almost have to look at this as sort of a three-D matrix. You almost have to look at this as sort of a 3D matrix. You have to take a look at experience. You have to take a look at where the person has been. But you also have to take a look at retention. And what I mean by that is there's a fair amount of, of salary increases that have occurred the last couple of years. And you're going to want this person, whoever they are, to be with you for at least two cycles. So be mindful of this as you go into your negotiations and as you think about salary. Thinking of this not just in terms of where the person's coming from, but be mindful of you want this person to be here five, six, seven years out, right? So you want to be careful that this is not, you don't want to have a salary that in three years, this person's going to be tempted to leave or is going to be an easy target to be recruited away from you, even if they're performing well. And we can talk more about this later, but I just want to point that out to you because I've seen that happen with districts. And we certainly want to be conservative and mindful, right? You're stewards of the public trust and I fully understand that. But I've seen that happen. And so it's just something I want to point out and I'm, Barb will share the grids with you and we'll get into all those numbers and we can do all the analysis. But I'm just a little bit cautious that maybe because of where you've been with some of the previous administrators, there may be a tendency to want to look at their numbers and, and use that as you think about who your next leader might be and maybe think about where their salary should be based on those prior experiences. And I'm a little concerned that that may set you up for failure.
Okay, thank you.
I can share with you also that of the clients we work with, most choose the first or the fourth option. And again, you do what's right for Red Wing. I think the reason some people really like the first option is it's very factual and there isn't anything that you really read into it. Now, if they're worth their salt, they're going to look into it and find out what contract year it was, who was your superintendent, how long were they there and how much experience did they have? So they will be able to put it in some context. The challenge sometimes with the third one with that range is you're really boxing yourself in because once you've stated that's the salary range, you really cannot go outside of that. And you might find a candidate that is exactly what you're looking for and they'd take the job if you just gave them $10,000 more in base salary. And you'll lose people like that if the salary doesn't fit what they're expecting. Keeping in mind, obviously, the compensation package is much larger. They may not need nor want some of the things you're offering, so they might want a higher base salary. So it gets a little sticky when you're, you're putting things in there. Sometimes number two does work well, a minimum salary of. The challenge with that is the minimum salary of might be for someone with no experience, it's a lot of money. But for someone who does have experience and is interested, they might scoff at that and think, oh, that's just, wow, if that's the low end, I'm scared what the high end might be. So the messages you send by this posting are tricky and people will interpret them differently. The information on the next page is helpful. And again, some of it was, again, thanks here to Anne for sending it to us. Some of it is from fiscal year 22. We haven't gotten the 23 information yet, but we have requests out for all those contracts. So we'll have more information for you at a later date. But what you put in the brochure also doesn't have to be decided tonight because this brochure is going to get published on Monday. So you don't have a lot of time to figure out dollars and cents and what you might or might not be willing to pay based on how many years of experience they do or don't have. So in that case, some people really like the bottom one because it's super generic. Now, I think Anna, you might have mentioned it, candidates like to see a number of some sort. They do like to see a number. So that's the argument against the fourth one. So I'll turn it over to you to discuss and decide what you'd like to do.
Thank you. Well, these superintendents are well-known to each other. Maybe they'll know each other and they know how to go and look online and see what somebody's contract is. I mean, they're going to do that, their due diligence and go from there. So they'll probably look at our former superintendent to our current interim superintendent. So I agree with you on that number four, that it's just more competitive compensation benefits package when we negotiate it. But I understand the idea they want a number two, so whatever you want to do.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm willing to bow to the experts.
For sure.
That's what I, I think I like Barb's point about the first one in that it is just factual. Initially, I was thinking I didn't like the first one, I was with Pam, but maybe that would be the best because it gives the number and, you know, the candidates don't have to go out looking for it on the contract unless they want to. It gives a starting number, which is something they might be looking for without us having to come up with a starting place, right? Ending place. And it's got, answers the question and, and it also says, you know, it's negotiable.
Right, right.
But there is a number because like Pam said, I mean, or Anna, you want to know a number, a number helps. And maybe throwing the current guy's salary and then we know that maybe they don't care about, but it's justified, it gives a context.
I'd use the previous one, not the current one.
Yeah. We should say the previous.
It's the bad number. I don't know.
Jackie will know. I can.
Hundred fifty-two, hundred fifty-four.
Jackie will know that number.
He'll know.
I think you go with that. I'm okay with that. I think you're right now that you've explained that, put that in context, Barb. I'm more comfortable with that. It's facts.
It does keep your options open because you may have a candidate. And the last one, the one time it really backfired on a district, they wanted to leave it very vague and just say, hey, what's negotiable with commensurate with experience and so on and so forth. And they found someone they fell in love with and then they fell in love with the district. Turns out they were over $30,000 apart on a base salary. And they lost that candidate because the expectations were way out of whack with what they had been able to pay previous superintendents. So it can be risky not having a number. So am I hearing you say that the first one, but say the previous superintendent's base salary for the, will it be 21-22?
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty twenty-one to twenty-two contract year is, and I'll get that number from Jackie.
But he had a contract that he left early on for this year, this school year. So there's a contract.
It is for twenty-two to twenty-three, but he got out of it earlier.
We had a negotiated twenty-two, twenty-three contract base amount.
So that might be better to put in there. Thank you, Jim. So the previous superintendent's base salary for the 2022-23 school year was?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a great point because that'll be a little bit higher. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three was, and then that dollar amount. Previous superintendent, is everyone okay with that? And that'll be in the brochure. You're going to see the brochure also and get back to us by noon on Friday if you see something that's not right. So we'll put that language in there from the first one and we'll get the number from Jackie for the 2022-23 year for Carson's contract. Everybody good with that? Great, thank you. Very healthy discussion on that, I appreciate the conversation. So I want to move on to stakeholders first and I want to talk about the survey and then I'm going to turn it over to Craig to talk about the community engagement piece here. This is the survey that we would have live and available this Thursday already. Again, we're leaving it open until January 26th. We did not change that date, if I remember correctly, for the survey. Yep, still January 26th. We have it here in both English and in Spanish. And we will have it, the link online, it's one survey and you toggle between those two languages. So it can be one survey link the district shares. I'll be sending this out tomorrow to the district to place it on the website, get the communications out to all of the stakeholders to fill it out. And you'll want the hard copies available in the community too for folks that can't or won't fill out a computer survey. So in hard copy and in electronic. And then also the communications piece will explain where to go, where to fill it out, how to fill it out. And then we've noticed that there's both quantitative and qualitative questions in here. The quantitative, in fact, on page two, you will recognize that. The second page of the survey is the same list the school board used in your online survey. So that's one area where we can compare apples to apples with what your stakeholders are saying compared to what the board identified as a priority. Now, on the very first one, self identifiers, do you want any of those changed? The one that most often is changed, I would say, is some districts do want the word agriculture on there and others don't. Otherwise, most of these tend to stay the same unless you would like to have a special designation for a self identifier that's not on here.
Also, when you're saying others, please specify, is that open for an individual to put in there? Or do you, okay.
Yep, and a lot of people will put grandparents of students in the district, former board member, business owner and parent. They may do that. Not a lot of people select other. They will put on one hat when they fill the survey out, even if honestly, they could fit two, three, four of these categories. But they will self identify the other if they want to.
Okay.
So are these okay as is? Do you want agriculture removed? Do you want to leave it in there?
Leave it in there because we have the seven township, so we have another farmers out there, so.
Okay. Okay, no additions to the list of stakeholders on there?
No.
Okay, so the quantitative is on the first two, three pages and then the qualitative are the open-ended questions. And the one thing I always want people to know, and we'll mention this in the Q and A session, you can fill out all or just a piece of this. You do not have to answer every single question. So if someone wants to go through and do a quick, my top six of this, my top six of that, and then skip the open-ended, they can do that. That response is still recorded. Similarly, if they want to skip all the quantitative stuff and go into the open-ended questions and share what they think, there is no character limits on this. They can type as much as they want to in response to all of those questions. And also, it's anonymous. If someone wants to identify themselves, sometimes they do in the very last question that says other comments, they may share their name or their contact info. But for the most part, these are anonymous responses. People tend to be very candid when they can respond anonymously and there's no character limits on those. So any questions on the survey before I turn it over to Craig?
You said the link will be on our school website. Is it going to be a link that we can copy and paste into our social media pages? Like our school website, but even our own personal pages that we can share with friends or community members?
Yes, absolutely. And I would encourage you to do that. And I think we talked a little bit last week about the media, that it's always a good idea for US board members to share or copy the official district link. And I know that Anne will be having a big part of this in terms of communications. So sharing that so that nothing is lost in translation, rather than doing your own post from scratch. It's up to you, though. You're also individuals can do what you'd like. But yes, copy and paste the link and place it anywhere that you can think of. Press releases would be great, newspaper would be great, radio, all of those outlets that we talked about last week.
Now, if we're going to do a press release, Anne is going to handle all that, right?
Right, we'll send her press releases that she'll then format to fit the protocols of Red Wing, but we will do all of the press releases, get them to her the same evening that you make those decisions. And then she can wordsmith it to fit how you typically like your communications pieces to look. But yes, we'll share those with her. And then we'll always copy the board chair on all of the communications that we're sending internally to the point people in the district will start copying Jim on all of those. So he'll know when we've sent something out and said, okay, district, please do this or place this link here, or here's the Zoom link. He'll be seeing those in his email as well.
The question two about, it says they're sent to the school year surveys, are they, where are they stored, who gets them and how do you get them and all that?
That's a good question. That's if there's hard copies. And typically, I would, I'll send this to Lisa and say, please make some hard copies in both languages to have available at the district office. So if someone comes by and picks them up and fills them out, they want to bring them back and return them. And then Lisa will just put them in a stack and then at some point, I would ask her to just scan those to us and I can get the results added to all of the electronic results as well. And we typically don't get a lot of hard copies. We want to make it available as an option. It's pretty rare that we get more than two or three hard copies filled out. We get a lot, we will take a lot. We'll make sure that those are counted.
I mean, I'm sure you're experienced in this already because you've done this before, but to communicate out to all of our different buildings, just in case, you know, like somebody's dropping their kids off at Sunnyside and they drop that off in the office, that the people in the office are aware that that's coming or, you know, has the potential to show up and they know, you know, they're not just surprised, like, you know.
That's a great point, thank you, Anna.
And on the corner of the desk and then nobody hears about it.
Well, or do we want to have a couple of copies available at the buildings? Because I don't think elementary people have a staff with parents. They don't know where the district office is and that's not a slam on them. That's just, right now, this is where their world is and they'll find that out later on. So I don't know. It might be, it might be more accessible for people because I want people to have it if it's in their child's school building, especially if it's someone who is intimidated by institutions. It might be easier, better to get it at school where they're familiar and comfortable.
So should I change this language? And this language is only in the hard copy about returning it to the district office because electronically, they just fill it out and hit submit. But I can change this language to say, return this survey by January 26, 2023 to the location at which you picked up the survey. So if they pick it up at the elementary school, they can return it to the elementary school. Would that help? And then someone within the district needs to facilitate getting hard copies in each of your buildings? Is that okay?
Or you can do that and then say, or please, or you can return it to the district office.
Or the district office? Okay, yep, we can do that. District office. Okay.
If I ever picked it up, I'm up here now, why can't I leave it here?
Right. Great, we will make that change on both the English and Spanish versions. All right, Craig, your turn. Thank you so much. You can visit with us now about the community engagement in person that you're working on.
Thank you, I will be brief and succinct. I'll do this in five minutes or less. Again, I want to just offer my sincere thanks of appreciation to outgoing Chair Austin Dor for your guidance, leadership and counsel. I'm going to miss that. I thank you so much for your leadership. Obviously, the opportunity to work with the, on, the new onboarding Chair and Vice Chair. Looking forward to working with you and your leadership and counsel. I've been talking with and working with Anne and Dawn, as you well know, they've been doing just outstanding job. We've had several meetings talking about our engagement opportunities. I'm hoping to have before you, by the end of this week, a matrix and outline of our engagement opportunities. We're tentatively planning to hold listening sessions now on the 18th in person, part of the day on the 19th virtually and the following week, the week in the 23rd in January with anywhere between eight and 12 listening sessions using a set of structured questions to garner feedback on what the community is seeking in your next superintendent. I will share those structured questions with you. There's, there's nothing complicated or anything surprising around those. But we're looking at making sure that we hear from employees or staff, from community leaders, from parents and from students across the district. And somewhat in keeping with the previous conversation, we want to make sure that we're doing this in a variety of settings across the district. So hopefully, we'll be meeting in multiple district buildings. Director Buck has been kind enough to assist me out of respect and following the protocols of the sovereignty of Prairie Island of making sure that we're reaching out to the appropriate representatives of Prairie Island Tribal Council and seeking their approval and going through the appropriate protocol to have the permission to hold a listening session in the community to make sure that the voice and representation of the members are heard as well. Making sure that we are able to provide feedback to you and to use this information as foundational, not just to the search, but as we've talked in the past, hopefully to use the information as the district moves forward with other strategic planning initiatives to help guide both the board and the new superintendent and to make strategic and financial decisions as the district moves forward. I'm not at all opposed to long days. The outline that you will see has us starting typically at around 7:00, 7:30 in the morning going until 7:00 or 8:00 in the evening. These sessions are quite long, but I think it's important work. I find it to be quite fulfilling. And I hope that I was not offensive to any of you as board members. It's about the position, not you as individuals when we talk. position, not you as individuals. When we talked about being mindful, that it's just important that because of your position of authority and the power that you hold, that people are able to attend these sessions and speak freely and openly. We, I do nothing, I don't touch the information. We have someone who is a member of those groups who will actually synopsize the information, and you'll be given access to that information. I don't touch it. But again, it's very important that people are able to come and speak freely, and not that any of you would interfere with that. But it's just who you, your representation, not who you are as individuals that can sometimes hamper that. So I appreciate your understanding and sensitivity to that issue. So I'm looking forward to it. And again, I want to speak back to the work that Anne and Dawn are doing, the website. You know, they'll be putting up a lot of really important information. That'll be really communication central. That'll have all of the dates, locations, information that people can go to to find out what's happening, when and where. As we talked earlier tonight, the critical dates around the search, what will be happening, when the board will be meeting, what critical decisions will be made. And I think that transparency as well will lend itself to the integrity of this search, the hard work that you're all doing and leading, and, and really, I think, put that out there for the public to see, and to be able to be a part of and feel, right, the essence of this work, and to feel and understand the role that the public can play as this search moves forward. So I'm really excited, and I hope that you are as well, about what's about to take place here, and about just how far you've moved this along already. I mean, I think that there are going to be a lot of people watching this search, just because of the proximity and the timing of it. It's early enough in the season that I think there will be a lot of eyes on this to see how Red Wing does, and to see how this process plays out in the weeks ahead. So I'm proud to be a part of this. I'm proud to be working with each of you. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to 2023, because I think it's going to be fun. And it's an exciting time, especially with everything else going around us. And I hope you don't mind me saying this, but Jim is a former mayor. You know, there's a lot of municipalities that could take a lesson from this board tonight, because I got to tell you, going through all those housekeeping items, you know, like designating who's going to handle your bank accounts, and who's going to be your, your, what publications are you going to show up in? You know, you handled that. There's city councils that don't get through that stuff until midnight. You did that in like, an hour and a half. That was amazing. So thank you for doing that. I'm just saying, okay. So Barb, I'm going to turn it back to you. But the board, you can expect to see some documents coming from, from Anne and Dawn. And we would welcome your input before the week is out, before we go to press on this. But, you know, we're really looking forward to moving on with the engagement, as I said before, starting the week of January 16th. During the week of the 16th and the 23rd, we want to make sure that we don't overlap or in any way interfere with the, with the Dakota project. We want to make sure we respect that and work around those dates. But really looking forward to moving on with this work. So thank you for that time. Thank you for your time this evening. And Barb, I'm going to turn it back over to you. Any questions for me?
I'll just say, Craig, thanks for your work on this, and, you know, stepping up and helping your alma mater, Red Wing High School. And you didn't have to, but I know that this board thanks you for that, from a heart. And if there's something we can do for you, you know, as a district, you know, Lisa's a phone call away, she's very good, as is Anne and Dawn. Let us know. You got my email, too, my phone number, if you need that, too. But we wish you luck on it. We hope to hear a lot of things. It's exciting times for Red Wing. You know, we're going, we just passed the referendum. We have the Red Wing promises, which is huge, which is proud. That's listed on there. And now we're going to get a superintendent we hope can lead us for many years down the road. So it's, it's, and we've got a very active and robust board right here on top of it, and want to work what's best for the students, staff, and the community. And we want to go forward. And this is the first, one of the first steps in that process.
Jim, you know, it, look, hey, it, it, Red Wing changed my life. And, and you all are great people. I, I love the community. My wife, my wife is from there. Yeah, there's some things that could be different. It's not perfect, but it has a lot of really positive things going forward. And so I'm honored by this opportunity to be working with you. Let's just keep it moving forward, and, and let's go. So thank you.
Questions for Craig?
I was just wondering, when we have, when you have those dates and the times finalized, I know I talked to Anne today, and she was talking about having kind of a landing page on the district website to have, you know, information about the search, to have those on there. Then I'm wondering if a version of that link could be on the paper survey, or in the digital survey, you know, if, just that way, people know that those dates, even if the dates aren't necessarily finalized when the paper gets printed, that they know where to go look and see when those engagement sessions will happen. Just, I don't know, thinking another way to try to get information out there.
Director, let's do this. I think Anne is on here now. How about, let's, let's, let's try this. Without announcing it, let's see if we could set up that page this week, and have the board take a look at it. Even if it's just a draft or trial page, right, with as much information as we can, can get set up. So, for example, the engagement dates, the locations, the times, right? And even the dates, as we discussed tonight, that the board's going to meet tentatively, and interviewing, and all those things. Just for the board's edification, how about if we did that? Would that help?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, I would like for us to be able to get that information out to as many people as efficiently as possible. But, you know, we're not, I don't know, if we're pushing the, the online survey, that people can also really easily see where the in-person things are going to happen.
Yeah, no, I, I, I would love, so I'd love it if you could see it first, before it goes live, just so we can get, get your input. Anne's going to probably shoot me for doing this. I'm, I, my machine, I, my screen's probably just going to kind of like blow up here. But, but Anne, I promise you, I'll buy coffee tomorrow or something. But, but maybe we could do, I'll call you after the meeting, Anne, I promise. I'm sorry. I better, I better be quiet. I'm in trouble.
All right. So one of the things that I'm doing tomorrow is I'm going to send a communications piece touching on the stakeholder survey, the link, and the Q and A session, because we want people to feel comfortable, so many questions in advance for that. And I'll be coordinating that most likely with Anne. So in that communications piece, she may want to weave in information about the listening sessions as well, because that announcement, when the survey goes live, will go to all your stakeholders. Typically, it's an email, distribution lists of parents or of staff. It also is in the press releases. So including that information is definitely an option, even if it's not firmed up yet. She could say, please, go to the district website for updates throughout the search process. So yes, that's a great idea. And I think it's something that she's right.
I gotta, I gotta go. It's been great. I, I gotta go do the driveway or something.
I just wanted to reassure you that Dawn and I actually met with Craig last Friday, even though it was a holiday, we just had a great conversation. And then Dawn and I met today again at 9:30 to 10:30. So we have started some things. I've shared them actually with Barb and Craig tonight. So we'll be on it, and I should have something with Dawn, and I should have something for you by the end of the week. So I promise, no problem.
All right. Thank you very much in advance, Anne and Dawn. Any other questions?
Thank you, Anne. I'll still buy coffee.
All right. So on, on the agenda, there's one other piece I want to touch on, just to plant a seed around stakeholder involvement. We talked about stakeholder survey, as well as the listening sessions, focus groups, whatever you're, you want to call them, Craig. So the third piece I wanted to at least remind you of is that whether or not stakeholders are involved in the finalist interviews will be up to the board. You're going to be discussing and deciding upon that at the February 23 meeting. We want to be able to present you with the stakeholder report first, which will incorporate all of the information from the survey, as well as from the listening sessions. When you have seen that, and we've discussed the implications of those, of that information, I'm going to ask the board to make a decision as to how and if stakeholders will also be involved in the interviews. It, it trended one way last year. Generally speaking, the stakeholder survey report was so thorough that boards felt very comfortable using that as the voice of the stakeholders during the interview process. That doesn't mean, however, that this board might not choose to do something differently. So that's going to be something we'll discuss on the 23rd. But I wanted you at least to start thinking about it. I think we talked about it last week in the workshop as well. But for now, no need to make a decision. We want to wait and see what the response is to the survey and the listening sessions. And if we reach a great swath of people and have a lot of great information, and it's not going to be all sunshine and roses, one of the things I want to make sure is that, that the board understands the report we provide to you will be the honest reflections of the stakeholders. It will include, one of my staff persons like to say, sugar and the vinegar, everything that people have to say, whatever trends have emerged, good, bad, or other, will be in that report for you. So we'll talk about the finalist interviews on February 23. Okay, moving right on, unless there's other questions from anybody? Okay. We're actually almost done. This is wonderful. Hang in there. So the role of the current superintendent, I always just want to be very clear with expectations as to whether or not they're involved in the search. And I'm assuming in this case, since you do have an interim, that they would not be involved in this search. Is the board seeing that differently and wanting Frank to be involved in any part of this process?
No.
Okay, so there is no role for the current superintendent. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about that before I move forward. School board spokesperson, you talked about this last week. And if I remember correctly, it was going to be the board chair, but routed through Anne as your communications person. Is that still correct? Okay?
Yes.
And Jim, you are willing to serve as the board spokesperson? Thank you.
I'm afraid to speak.
So much. So Jim, and then routing through the communications department if there are quotes that are requested and things such as that. In district contact person, to this point, again, I want to reiterate how much help we've received from your staff to get us that information for the brochure, the salary information, really do appreciate that. So originally, it was a lot of gathering of information that we leaned on those folks for. I know that Craig is working very closely and leaning on Anne and Dawn for the community engagement in-person pieces. Moving forward, what we really need primarily is a point person to get information on the website. It's more of a coordination role of information. It won't be too much, because most of it we will still do. Again, we'll write the press releases and things like that. Should the point person remain? Anne and Dawn, and then Lisa, if it involves meetings, or how would you like me to proceed from this point forward with internal contact folks?
Who does the contact on our website? Is that Anne?
Anne and Charlie, them. I think, I think the three you just named are three good ones to.
Jill Rabar does the website, but through Anne. But Jill out of our office and community ed, but Anne directs a lot of the information that goes on the website.
So go through Anne and Dawn, they'll get it to Jill, and then Lisa will.
Anne and Dawn, and then copy Lisa. And I will always copy Jim as board chair. That'll be our internal route. So the board is always looped in what we're asking the internal folks to do. Okay, thank you very much in advance again to Lisa and Dawn and Anne. Okay, great. Search agreements. Was there a question? Okay, search agreement. This will not take very long. I just wanted to point out a few quick things. If you continue to go through your packet, stakeholder involvement, we're not going to dwell on that. This was the document I sent to you. You had hired MSBA without seeing an outline of our services or costs. And so I wanted to just revisit this briefly with you. We will always do the survey. We will always do the Q and A session. We do not always do the focus groups or listening sessions. However, in this case, we are doing them, and there is no additional charge. Many, many thanks to Craig for him volunteering his time and expertise to do that. So there's no additional charges for those. The input forums, there is no additional charge, but those are the interview committees, perhaps, that we're going to discuss on February 23. So expectation management around stakeholders, just want to make sure you're comfortable with that page. Okay? The next page, the summary of search services. This is, I'm going to do something different, though, because what we had discovered with the pandemic is the benefits of a hybrid model. We were able to keep our costs down for our searches, because we usually attend these meetings, some of these meetings, virtually instead of in person. Now, because I had planned to be there in person tonight, and I'm virtual instead, there's two meetings right in the middle here. They have the red, double red asterix by them for those meetings. There would normally be a charge for us to be there in person, but because I'm with you virtually tonight, and I haven't gotten to see you in person yet, I'm just going to come to all of the meetings in person for no additional charge. So I will plan to be in person, weather permitting, moving forward for all of the meetings associated with the search. So no charge for that at all. And then the last thing is on the page 10 of our, I would call it a proposal, but it wasn't quite a proposal. I want to talk about national advertising. I referenced this earlier. Are there national advertising sites you want us to include this posting on? There are some included here in red for your consideration with the dollar amounts connected to them. We don't mark up any of the postings for national sites, but we will facilitate getting the information on there if you would like us to. So do you see any or all of these that you would like to spend the additional dollars on to advertise?
I'm looking at this. I like two, three, and four.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Put add two, three, and four.
National Alliance of Black School Educators, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, and the National Indian Education Association. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so those costs are listed there, and we will make sure to get those posted on Monday as well. Some of these sites take a little bit longer. I'm hoping that less than a week is enough, but they will get posted very, very soon on those three sites. And then the last thing I want to ask about is background checks. At the bottom of that, right below national advertising, background checks, you will, of course, do a background check for employment in your district. A BCA standard check is for every employee of the district. If you are interested, we do background checks through Good Hire, although they just changed their name to Checker. Those are very in-depth background checks, where they verify their employment history and their educational credentials. This is an option for you. Not every district does this. In fact, very few do. But if you want us to conduct background checks on your lone finalist, or your final two or final three, we are happy to do that. And that cost is a flat $395 per finalist. So if you think you might want it, I want to ask you about it tonight.
Kind of turnaround time is there on it? If we had like our final, or, you know, final three, how long do you need to do that if we chose to only do it for one or three or whatever?
Great question. Five to seven days is how long it takes them to get that information back to us. And it does require that the candidate take about 20 minutes to fill in information. As soon as we let Good Hire know that these are the three people they're doing it on, they'll shoot an email to that person. They do have to input that information for them to begin checking on. So again, it's up to you.
Barely, if we interview on the 9th, and decide that night, and we want to do our final interviews on the 13th, is it possible that we wouldn't get that information back in time?
Especially if there's a weekend in between there, you probably would not have it by the 13th.
Right.
You could do it, so employment's subject to passing a criminal background check.
Well, that's, I mean.
The other thing is, my question is, since I used to do them, my question is, you, you may know a bunch of these, you may know some of these people that you're recommending to us. So that may not be necessary.
Correct.
Because of relationship. So like you said earlier, not, not everybody, not very many of them do it. So I think we wait on that to see what goes down the road. That's my, I think.
The districts that do immediately say, yes, we want a background check, even if it's on the lone finalist, because the sample motion I'm going to give you will say contingent upon a successful background check, whether it's this one or the standard one you use at Red Wing Public Schools is up to you. The districts that have been burned in the past, where a superintendent claimed to have a PhD, find out that they don't have a PhD. They want to do a background check. So if you haven't been burned previously by someone who fudged their resume, you probably don't immediately think that you need to do this. Otherwise, large districts tend to always do it. They want to be very certain of their information. So you could leave it optional right now and wait and see who your three or two are, or your single person, because Jim's correct. You're going to know some of these people. We're going to know probably most of them, but you never know. Someone coming from in out of state, we don't necessarily know if they've stated correctly where they got their PhD from, or masters or something. So do you have to wait and decide on that?
Yeah, I'd like to wait.
Okay. All right. I'll put a maybe on there. Okay. The very last thing that I have to cover with you this evening is the last page in your packet. This is two pre-screening priorities. These are the application questions. Now, these are just samples, and I asked you in my email. These are the application questions. Now, these are just samples and I asked you in my email to think about two issues facing Red Wing that you want to use as one of your screening questions during the application process. Now, the nice thing about Revelus is we can customize questions. Um, Apple Track, which we used to use, the same questions had to be asked for every search. So in this case, I've just highlighted areas that other districts have really created questions around. Relationships, referendums, facilities, open enrollment, finances, um, the administrative team, distance learning or pandemic, strategic planning, uh, diversity, futurists, uh, curriculum. Any of these could be asks or up to, I think I have a copy of maybe 78 questions that districts used last year. So you could create what you'd like, but if there's an area that you want us to probe deeply on in that application that will help you as board members decide who you're interested in interviewing and help us identify who we're going to recommend, you may do that. So I'll leave it up to you to let me know what areas interest you, or if you see two questions on this list and want to use those, we can do that too.
So you want to talk about this right now, or do you want us to just send it to you?
You, if possible, if we could reach consensus tonight on it, and if you could at least reach consensus on the areas, the two areas you want us to probe deeply on in the application, we can craft the questions and send them to you for your approval. Again, we could send you two questions by noon on Friday. If you don't like these questions, let us know. Otherwise, these are the questions we're using. There is always a third question though. The third question is always, based on the leadership profile for this district, why are you the best fit? So there's, that question is always asked about your criteria. So you have two others you can select.
I think number nine is important.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
I marked that.
I was, that's the only one that I have. That is my only one that I am concerned about.
And I, and number one is there, ties in with number nine, is building strong relationships with.
Well, you're never going to know how to do that if you don't know how to get along with diverse backgrounds.
Right, correct.
Those were the two that I had.
Two I had too.
So maybe there's a way, maybe either do both or, you know.
For sure, number nine is top priority.
The other one I think, I don't know if it's, it's not really on here, but we want to look at is, uh, declining enrollment.
That's what I had marked.
Now, how do you, how do you see, or how do you approach? Uh, what approach, um, addressing the declining enrollment in a school district, in your school district to that extent? It's a big question. It's a big girl on the corner that nobody get their hands on.
That might be a really great question for your interviews. The only reason I hesitate a bit about asking it in the application is you don't want to scare off a candidate by asking a question that might be a negative one.
Right. Well, I mean, it signals you're going to have some budget problems because you don't have enough kids.
You could say that, yeah. I would say, I would write that down, Barb, for possible.
Interview question.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Thanks.
We could do something like number 10 for future of education.
Yeah, yes.
Declining enrollment is part of that.
That's a good one. That's a good one.
Right. And that touches on like distance learning, PSEO options. Well, and 11 also share how you have enhanced curriculum in the districts you are working in and how you have developed or implemented innovative programs.
I feel like a good person will, a good candidate, I should say, would include that in answering number 10.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Yeah.
I can just sound to deal with, Barb.
So which two areas? I hear, I hear the questions you liked were one, nine, 11, 10. Pick two. Write some questions. Do you like that? Or should I make it a little bit more, um, all encompassing, number nine? Or do you like that language?
Well, nine and one can kind of be combined.
Yeah, could you do that somehow?
Okay, yep. Combine nine and one, okay? And then what's the secondary area you want to question around?
Number 10?
We use 10.
10?
For education.
Do you like 10 and this, or do you want that reworded?
I like the ways worded.
Yeah. Yeah. I think how somebody answers that and what they choose to highlight as their response would be telling. Yeah. And if they, you know, if where they're thinking matches what we're thinking.
Okay. Everyone's in agreement on that? Terrific. Thank you. So I will combine questions one and nine. And we will also ask question 10 on the application form. Okay. All right. With that, that's the conclusion of all the things I needed you to answer for me tonight anyway. Congratulations and thank you. I know it's been a very long night. Um, any other questions that you need answered before we log off tonight?
I have already emailed you the wording for the brochure.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Barb or Craig? No. We thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. And, uh, thank.
Would you like me to email you that sample model contract tonight, or do you want to wait and receive the model contract during interview training?
Interview training's fine.
Interview training, put it off for a couple more weeks? Okay. Otherwise, it's on our website. If you want to see the model contract for superintendent, you can find it on the website very, very easily. So I will not email it out to you yet then. Is anyone coming to the conference the end of next week? Will I see you in, yay, I'll see you in Minneapolis? That's awesome. Please say hi to meet you in person. That would be really wonderful. So I'll see you up there. Craig, any final thoughts, uh, tonight? Thank you again for being with us as well.
Just thank you for your time. Um, please be safe and, um, let's have fun with the search.
So exciting. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Have a good evening. We're going to continue our meeting here. So appreciate both of your time and, uh, uh, we look forward to Craig when we see you at the, are you going to the conference?
If, if Barb will let me in, yes, I'm, I'm, hopefully try to attend.
Agreed. Thank you so much, everyone. Take care. Here, we'll see you soon. All right. Bye-bye.
Okay, um, future topics and upcoming meetings, we approved the, uh, the meeting schedule before. If you have some topics, don't feel, let us know ahead of time if you have something. We have a pretty packed two and a half months coming up here. If you get it done. Appreciates everybody's help in working and adjusting schedules and trying to figure out what works best for us. It's, it's an exciting time. I said that earlier, so.
I'd like to add, um, our distance learning policy and our snow day call off policy. I mean, I just think, yeah, there were some issues with today and it's that time of year, so I think we need to revisit it.
I think you're right.
I think just the e-learning stuff policies, I have looked at some of them, but I would be interested to.
It's better than what it was when we first started here. It was not when I first started here.
I think that all of that needs to be looked at with an eye on equity. Because if kids don't have access to the internet, um, I know you have a week to get it done, but I just think we should maybe survey staff and see how they feel about it, whether, when we do have these distance learning days, whether it's, um, productive time or is it a time when kids who are already behind now have something else on their plate that helps them fall further behind? And I'm really concerned about that. So, yeah, and it's in the contracts, so it's a contract issue too.
It's a big discussion because we want teachers available. Just because it's snow, they, we still, our kids, they need to.
Right.
And, uh, until we get our, some scores up a little bit, we, we, we need, it's nobody's fault. We just, we just need to be make it easier for every student that's here.
Because there's only so much teachers can do in that setting. And I think we need to, um, we just, I'm, equity needs to be considered. We have to look at something that's equitable for all kids.
Right. And how we can do that, we're looking at a discussion about that.
So, and talk to the teachers, see what they think.
All right. And parents, which is teachers aren't the only ones here that are affected. You got cooks, parents, custodians and district staff and.
Parents.
Parents. Yeah, but, you know, it's an educational experience. We want to be a positive experience and a good educational experience besides if we can, everything we can. So good question. Good, good thing to bring up. We'll do that. Anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, we have the MSBA Leadership Conference for school board members next week. And, um, I think there's going to be at least a quorum of, uh, the board attending that. So I, it just has to make sure that we have it posted and our address of where it will be. So Lisa, if you can make, you probably are, yeah, I'm sure.
She probably knows who's going.
Oh, she does.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else?
I think it would be important at some point, not maybe right away, but just to kind of revisit some of the GCED and um, how we interact with them and it seemed like there was a lot of easiness with it and.
Yep. That's after the superintendent search, probably. Probably be like off on the plate right now.
Yeah.
But you're right. Something to always, with that and with that. Nothing wrong looking at things periodically to see how they're doing, how they're doing, if we can do them differently or not. So. Anybody else have anything else? Again, I want to thank you all for your support of this, the school, the staff, the community, students, so. Anything else?
Make motion to adjourn.
I just need a second. My phone's dead. I'm, I lost my tracker on that snowstorm.
So a second, I hear a second. Uh, Ms. Osborne made a motion to adjourn. It's a second. Second by Ms. Buck. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Told, motion carried. That's our next meeting.
When is that, 13? It's a Tuesday, man.
17.
No, I think it's the 14th, whenever the leadership.